They do all the work in the branches. Yeah, we got it now. It should be working.
Okay, we have video.
Oh.
All right, you got it now?
Okay.
All right. We got it now on everybody's phones.
I'm just going to YouTube to make sure that.
Okay.
Because that's what I have to do, right?
Yeah. That's me. She's gonna mess with it. She's doing her best.
Don't pull a Jennifer.
We got it. All right.
Good job. Okay. All right, we're ready. Everybody ready? Let me make sure my phone is off. All right. Good evening. Like to welcome everybody to the committee of the whole meeting of the village of Walton Hills of Tuesday, November 12th, 2024 at 7:08 PM. Apologize for the delay. We were having trouble with our audio on our live stream, but it seems like we've taken care of that. We are also recording it in Dispatch. Our dispatcher is recording it. Okay, second order of business is pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Nikki, roll call.
Councilman Nielsen?
Here.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Here.
Councilwoman Allen?
Here.
Councilman Spitznagle?
Here.
Councilman Whedon?
Present. All of council is present, along with our fiscal officer Nicole Self, our law solicitor John Montello, plus we have quite a few department heads here. We also have Melissa Sangrick, our fiscal clerk, our village engineer Joe Gelati, our recreation and community life director Natalie Buck, and our police chief Dave Kvitikowski. So, next item is comments related to the agenda items. Anybody has any comments? I'd like to welcome everybody watching the live stream. You can ask anytime during the meeting. If anybody has any comments at this time. Any on the live stream?
No.
Okay. All right. The purpose, we put the legislation first before we do our budget discussion again. I know I talked about the draft being on there. That one came up. Joe, Mr. Gelati asked me to put a couple other items on there. The other thing Mr. Jordan asked me to put on, he will be here, but he probably won't be here for another 40 minutes, about some of the other items related to economic development. As far as the draft, because it's a large document, next week I'll have an executive session and Brendan Heo from Brickler and Eckler will also be here to discuss that even in more detail if needed. It's very similar to the CRA agreement with Cardinal, except the amount of the agreement is different. You know, and some of the abatement. So, those are some things. Tom comes here, we'll talk about it. But I thought Joe would be able to talk about his items now. Is that okay if we jump to the items that Joe had? And I just want to make a comment because me and John and Nikki talked about it a little bit. Some of these things like Ryan and Seeley, the core drilling and stuff, and me and Joe talked about it. Well, we didn't even talk about it and you already got it on for legislation. What we have is it's on the COW meeting, but as long as we don't put it on the agenda of the council meeting, if we just said, hey, we're not ready to do that, I just don't put it on the agenda. Where if I put it on the agenda of the council meeting, then we'd either have to vote it up or down the table. But not for discussion in the COW. Is that correct what we've talked about? Right. So, I don't want you to think, my God, we didn't even, you know, what's the mayor trying to do here? Or what's the engineer and the mayor? That's not, but I think it's clearer if we do it that way because it's also clear for Reds, because if we say, oh, we do want to have it on the agenda next week, we already got a very good reference of it and it's a little clearer, I think. So, I just wanted to tell you that. I didn't want you to feel like, you know, some of these items, some of these items like the draft, you knew were coming. We've talked about it and stuff. So, at this time, do we need a motion to move any of the things up from the agenda?
No, we can just jump around.
In the COW, okay. Joe, if you want to talk, now I did, did everybody get their mail? Okay, so there was a couple memos from Joe. Just good reference. I might read them in the record at the council meeting. So, Joe, whatever one you want to start with, kind of talk about either South Meadow Park Drive Culvert or Ryan Sealy.
Yeah, we'll do them, I guess, in order that they appear here. It looks like South Meadow Park appears first on the agenda here.
Okay.
So, South Meadow Park, we're all familiar, I think, with the situation with the Culvert replacement project that we've been trying to do for a number of years now. We're in a little bit of a holding pattern with that project because we've been unable to obtain the easements, all of the private property easements that we need to move forward with that project. So, what we'd like to do is utilize an easement property acquisition service. This company is OR Colon. They can guide us through the legal process, let's call it, to obtain these easements that we need. I've actually worked with these guys once before. They did a fantastic job for us in another community. And the nice thing here is, as we know, this entire project is funded through NERSD, and that would include the cost here to hire OR Colon. So, this is a project we'd like to do in 2025, and I think this is our next, or maybe our first step to try to be able to actually make this project occur in 2025.
Any questions on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Basically, how long, once this company starts the process, how long, I know you mentioned 2025, but how long?
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to give them at least a few months to work through everything, and that would seem to line up, hopefully, for a construction, you know, next summer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Joe, is there some kind of disadvantage to these yards that they're against having this done? Against giving an easement on their property?
Yes, we've had some trouble, as you might know, and many of the others do. We've had some trouble, namely with one property owner. We just, we're not able to come to an agreement as a village directly with that property owner. It's really stalled the project, hence the reason we'd like to go this route with this property acquisition service company.
So, it will be a benefit to all of them down there to have this done?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Joe, you said that the total cost for hiring this company is still covered by the NERSD?
That's correct.
May I call a graph?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a couple questions. Mr. Gelati, on the, could you explain the easements a little bit more? Are these, is this a permanent easement or is this a temporary easement just to gain access to the property to perform?
Yeah, so most of it would be temporary. It is possible that right at the actual end of where the Culvert pipe is, might have to be a permanent easement, but for the most part, they're all temporary easements, yes.
Okay, and you mentioned three properties. Are they all on the, I don't know, the west or the south side?
So, we have one on the east side, two on the west side.
Okay, one east, two west.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had and was on the, as it relates to the ORC, I don't.
Yeah, OR Colon, yeah.
OR Colon. I think I heard you say you have, they have done work with you or for you. So, I'm just, and this is going to be for the same question for the next piece of legislation. Yeah. In terms of, when it comes to selecting a vendor for something like this, although it may not be technically required to go after bid due to the price?
Correct.
Or the estimated price. Just curious, how do you go about selecting a particular vendor? Is there like a request for proposal or qualifications?
Yeah, so, Mr. Whedon, you're right. It's below the threshold for, let's call it, a public bid or a public request for qualifications, so we can move into what's called a direct select method, technically is, I think, what they call it. You know, if the service is qualified, which OR Colon certainly is, I would say they're the most qualified company in all of greater Cleveland, you know, we can move forward like this because we are below the money threshold, the cost threshold.
So, although we're below the threshold as it relates to, we say for a community that is still trying to make sure they're tightening the belt, so to speak.
Yeah.
I would say pinching pennies, it won't quite go that far.
Yeah.
How do we, how do we know we still have the, in terms of good price or best price?
Yeah, so, good question, and I understand it. And I guess the statement I would make is, I don't think we're ever going to find it for less than this, and we're certainly not going to find a more qualified group than OR Colon. So, really, that's the best answer I can give you. There's not a lot of companies around that even perform this service. It's somewhat of a niche service, and that's really going to be true when we get to the next item, because it's very much a niche service.
And then the cost estimate, how do you, how do we arrive at the cost estimate? Is it based on hours of, per hour?
Yeah, they did provide a breakdown, and they break it down. I actually didn't bring it with me, but they broke it down by all the different steps they have to take with each of the three properties, and I did a quick comparison with some previous work that they had done, that I was involved with, and it's right in line.
Okay, so, at the, will the village or receive a invoice at the end of the work? Or is there, along the way, is there progress payments? How does?
No, for something of this nature, I'm certain it would be one invoice at the end, and then we would get reimbursed from NERSD.
Okay, and that's pretty much the same with the second piece of legislation.
Correct. Yeah. Pretty much everything we just said would also apply to the second piece.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Any other questions related to that project? Yes.
The sewer district will also review the reason of the bill as well. You know, they're not just going to shell out money unless they think it's a reasonable expense. So, there's a check, checks and balances there.
Any other questions related to that? Okay. Joe, did you just want to talk about the next one too? Ryan Sealy, the asphalt?
Yeah, we can roll right into the next one as well. This is for Ryan and Sealy Circle. We all know the condition of the pavement up there. We don't need to rehash that, and we're all also aware. We currently have a grant funding application in with OPWC, which we're awaiting the results of, find that out in the spring, but I'd like to get us in a position to hopefully perform the work, the project in 2025. You know, however that comes about remains to be seen, but what I don't want is I don't want us to be in a position in the summer of 2025 where we do decide to move forward, but we don't have the, this pavement for our service. We have to stop and, okay, let's go back to step one and then risk not being able to do the project in 2025. So, I'd like to get this core sampling service moving here soon, over the winter. They can do it in the winter. It's not a problem. This way, we have this information in our hands, so to speak, and then we're ready to move forward with the project, whether that's in '25 or '26, '27, heaven forbid. You know, the information is still valid, will be valid for a number of years. So, we're not going to lose out, you know, we're not going to spend any money for something we're never going to use because we will use it eventually. And really, that's it. I just don't want us to be caught behind schedule, if you will, or I don't want us to not be able to perform the work in 2025 just because we didn't have these core samples done earlier. That'd be a black eye for all of us.
That same type of core sampling, the same thing it did in Barclay Estates?
Yes, and also for Egbert Road too. As many of you guys will remember the Egbert Road project from many years ago, we did the same approach, and that one's worked out really nice. Barclay's looks really nice too these days. I hope you, I know you agree.
I know we discussed that, because that was my question, and what else did we discuss related to that? Joe, oh, that you can, not that it matters that project's going to exceed our grant, you know, we have that 50% sharing, but we can backcharge that into that, correct?
Oh, yeah, OPWC does have a look back period, so if we were to get the grant later this year, we could apply for reimbursement for these core samples, and our grant is 50%. We're applying for 50% of the total project cost, so we would get this reimbursed at 50%.
Hey, Colgra?
Yes.
Yeah, I have one question.
Yes, Councilman.
So, when the core samples are completed, if the core samples tell us that the road or the depth, the conditions are worse or better than anticipated when the application was put in, can there be an adjustment from the state up or down in terms of their award, potential award?
I don't think that can be adjusted at this point, but we've kind of, we have some allowances in there or contingencies, maybe is a better word, built into our application with OPWC, just in case of a situation like you described. Good question, though.
Any other questions related to Ryan and Sealy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
Joe, what exactly is in place asphalt?
Yeah, so it's the same process we used on Egbert Road many years ago. Basically, instead of simply milling off the old asphalt, having it hauled away and bringing in all new asphalt, we'll recycle what's there and right in place. We don't take it away. We don't, you know, the road stays open. And then we place new asphalt. So, we'll have this recycled asphalt, and it looks pretty nice. A lot of people think, hey, you know, that's great. Hey, my road looks great. And then we say, well, hold on, we're not done because we still have to place the new asphalt on top of it, and then you wind up with a brand new road, very similar to Barclay Estates or the Horseshoe or Alexander, any of these that we've done recently. You know, the finished product is exactly the same. It lasts even longer. Really no disruption to traffic, so it's the way to go.
Would we be looking at putting that, was it Reclamite?
That'd be a different product now. Maybe a couple of years down the road, we would Reclamite Ryan and Kaylee, correct? Yes.
Any other council, any other questions related to Ryan and Sealy?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati, how much is this costing?
This is $12,500.
I know, I saw that somewhere.
Yeah, it is in there. He's got it on the first page.
Somewhere.
Yeah. It is $12,500. I'm reading it right here from the legislation.
Oh, it's on the legislation. That's where I saw it. Okay, thank you. And what, just for my own edification, Mr. Jordan isn't here yet. When they do this core sample, what exactly are they looking at, looking for? What are they analyzing?
Yeah, so, I'll try to give you the brief explanation. I don't want to dive too deep into the engineering technical speak. I'll put you guys all to sleep, but.
It's okay, go deep.
If you say, you asked for it. So, they'll take core samples, probably a dozen of them up and down the road, and they'll go all the way through, all the way down into the gravel underneath the asphalt. So, we'll know how much asphalt we have, how much gravel we have underneath that. Then they'll actually take it back to the lab, and they'll provide us what they call the mix design, which tells us exactly the exact amount of each ingredient we need to put back into the road when we do the in-place recycling. And we've allowed for all of those ingredients, if you will, in our cost estimate. It's attached to our application that we have in with OPWC.
Thank you.
Yeah, try to keep it as simple, layman as possible.
Per made.
Per made, simple as possible.
Joe, and I think we still have one. Mr. Jordan is about a half hour away. Just texted me, told me he would text me. I kind of want to know so we don't stall. We do have one other item on there, and that's that resolution 2024-34.
Correct.
Authorizing the Village Walton Hills into a member community infrastructure grant program agreement with Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District for Sanitary Sewer Study Phase Two.
Yes.
You just kind of want to briefly talk about that.
Yeah, I can give a quick update on that. So, this is good news. We've been awarded the grant through NERSD, exact same grant and program that we were awarded last year through NERSD. And as you might recall, over the course of 2024, this is for our sanitary sewer inspection and analysis project that we've been doing. I view this as a preemptive work or preemptive project. We're trying to identify any sanitary sewer system problems we may have before they really become a big problem, and we have flooding issue or whatever else may happen. This past year, we were working in some residential areas of Barclay Estates, Walton Road, a little bit on Sagamore Road. Next year, our plan is to move over in the industrial area where the sewer district is telling us we might have some issues, so we want to take this free grant money that we've received and do our inspections and our analysis and our flow metering and all of that over in the industrial zone on those sanitary sewers. And it's a grant, so it's free money, so I'd recommend we accept.
Any questions for the village engineer relating to that resolution?
Oh, yes, we are. I have one question.
Yes.
Mr. Gelati, when you said the industrial areas, does this include all of the industrial parks, including the small ones?
Yeah, Hanan and Crick and North Field Road itself, so.
And what about up Egbert?
Oh, Independence?
Yeah.
Probably would do that one too. It's not very long, but we should include it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Joe, I'm sorry, you said it's a full grant, so there's no cost to us?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Gilati, our village engineer? Okay, Joe, I, I think we're good. So is Council in agreement for me to put those on the council meeting, those three items?
Yes.
With legislation?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Any residents have any questions for? I'm trying to keep you here, Joe.
My dad logged on, I think he's asking a question. Is he?
Yeah, yeah.
Don't say nothing bad about him.
He logged on.
I have one more for him.
Go ahead, Council, sorry.
Mr. Joe, I have one more question for you, and that is regarding the Phase One study. Is that work complete and how, and when will, when will the village hear the results?
Yeah, so I can give you a little bit of an update, I'm glad you asked. So it's just about complete at this point, as the calendar year is almost over. And I guess the way I'm looking at it is, NE-RSD, you know, kind of gave us a 20,000-foot view of the village and, you know, without getting into any detail or doing any real detailed study, they just say, hey, we think you might have problems here, 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 and here. You know, they identify all these areas. So then we apply for money, we get the money, so we go in and do the detailed study. And the good news is we found out that the sewers are clean, hydraulically, they're working just fine. We actually found that sewer district had some errors in their information, so we're going to kick that back to them and have them correct their information. And we'll also provide them a little report detailing all of the studies, areas that we've studied and basically that everything looks good, everything's flowing properly. And then both parties, ourselves and the sewer district, will have that on file and we're clean, so to speak, for, you know, the next 15 or 20 years, so.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully the same will happen in Phase Two, but I don't know until we get in there.
Any other questions? Anybody have any questions for Mr., our village engineer, Mr. Gilati? Otherwise, Joe, you're welcome to stay or you're, you're okay to go.
The phone is beeping, I better respond to this.
There you go.
Yeah, that's my wife.
Thank you, Joe.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Always a pleasure.
Happy Thanksgiving, if you don't see.
Ah, thank you, same to you. Our, our street commissioner and zoning inspector, Mr. Kalman, he couldn't make it tonight, so otherwise he wouldn't be here, so. But we knew we haven't had it covered, so anything to do with his budget too, we'll have to bring him in in December. He would have liked to have been able to, we had something here, so I said, no problem. Because I don't think we're going to get our, anything, our budget done, I don't think we're going to pass it next Tuesday, right? Okay, so Tom's probably, you know, what was it, probably five, 10 minutes ago? Do we just want to go and, you know, and then when he comes, just go through it or finish our budget? How, what do you guys think?
Natalie's there.
That's what I, that's how I feel and just, okay. So I know last, Natalie, I left, left, you know, we, I left you a message about some of the things, so I'll just kind of go through some of the items you, Council asked and myself, we were talking about and going through the budget. One of the questions was about transportation. Watch this, be Tom, Jordan, unless it was Joe going up. Also, seasonal wages and do those, most of those seasonal employees, are those wages for the Parker program? Or, you know, like what's the percentage like for our events? You know, is that majority of that budget? But here, go ahead, I'll let you kind of get the ball rolling and if anybody has any questions for Natalie or we want to go through her part of the, the budget. And how many Parkers? I know Diane had, you and Diane have, have been talking and she shared some of that with us last week about the Parker program, but, you know, whatever you can share too.
Do you want me to start with the Parker program?
Yeah, whatever, whatever works.
So I know the question was, how many kids we had? This year we had 28, eight, 28 kids. 10 of them are residents, seven were grandchildren, and 11 were non-residents. So more than half were from Walton Hills or somewhat related to Walton Hills. And the cost, you want to know the cost, right?
Yes.
So for a resident, it was $3.50, and this was five days a week. And for seven weeks, the grandchildren fee was $4.50. And then the non-resident fee was $9.50. It's been the same for the last, I think, three years, I want to say.
So the resident fee is, non-resident fee is?
Substantially higher.
Yeah, substantially higher.
I, do you want to know the revenue that I brought in, or?
Yeah, give us whatever, yeah.
So when we took registration, we had three children that wanted to do the golf. And because it was only three, we didn't do it because we needed a minimum of, I want to say five. So we ended up refunding some of that money, because it was $125 for the golf lessons. So we brought in 17, two, and then refunded those people, so it came out to $16,750, $16,750. We had concessions that brought in $259.75. And we spent $5,008.09. I don't know why the nine cents, but, but that was. But that does not include Bedford School's bus fee. We haven't gotten a bill from them, right?
No.
So we haven't gotten that yet.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that, what you spent again?
$5,008.09.
And that's on what, just materials?
Just whatever expenses we had. And we brought in $259.75 for concessions. And we didn't get the bus bill, but we think it's going to be about $550 for using the bus. So actual revenue would be $11,463.46, if we're estimating the bus bill.
Could you repeat that, please?
Oh, okay, $11,463.46. But again, we're estimating the bus bill.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Jen.
Natalie, can we get a copy of what you're looking at? We're all trying to jot down notes.
Oh, sure.
Different pieces of paper and stuff, so.
Sure.
If we could get a copy.
Yeah, yeah, John can make some copies.
Thank you, John.
Oh, you have one? She has.
Does it stay the same or did you make any changes since we backed it for us?
No, there's no, this is the summer camp one, though.
I'll just, okay.
Did that include the, you, the $5,000, was it wages included in that?
No.
No, okay, so that was just material and stuff and, okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
That would just be items particular to the camp?
Yeah.
Shirts or, or things that they had bought for the camp?
Shirts, that would be concession items that we were selling, that would be in there or any supplies we needed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Nikki, didn't you have, didn't you have the numbers for the campers that we paid? Did you have those numbers? I thought you had them last week. I have my papers here, but I wouldn't know where that.
Are you talking about the wages?
Yes.
I mean, I have the wages that we pay per hour, per camper, and per counselor. But I don't know what the total is over the summer. They didn't, they worked just summer camp and they did a little bit of cleaning during the week. They really didn't clean the bathrooms once camp was over. And they didn't really work any special events. We had Nikki there and we had Diane there for Haunted Hay Ride, we had some volunteers, and we had two counselors. And at Halloween, we had one counselor, one was sick. So we really only had two counselors that helped.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So the wages on our last statement were $29,449 for seasonal. In addition, we had transportation wages of $20,094.
That, that's for the transportation program?
Yeah, so that would be also transporting residents to, I guess, the grocery store in there.
Yeah, that, okay, so that's.
Yeah.
But not the part, that's not with the Parker program? The first one was just the Parker program, the seasonal.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
$29,449 for seasonal employees?
$449, yes.
$449?
Correct.
And one of the questions, Natalie, was those seasonal employees, that amount, that $29,000, those seasonal employees really are for the Parker program?
Yeah.
We, you might use one or two, a little bit here.
They cleaned a little bit on the weekends if we had a rental, but then we ended up getting somebody else to clean.
So 90% of those wages, easy, would be related to the, I mean, we can give you probably a breakout of that, have to look at the thing, but I think what you were looking for was, was it really to do with the Parker program? Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay. And that's, so those wages are really the Parker program?
And we had 12 counselors altogether.
Okay.
So round numbers, I'm showing a deficit for the Parker program of $18,000.
That's what I get, mm-hmm.
Now, you, you talked about transportation, did you want to?
Yes, I have.
Kind of talk about that? That was one of the other items that.
So we had, for this calendar year so far, we had 136 transports and we brought in $3,260.
What was that amount, Natalie?
$3,260.
Okay.
And we have three transport drivers and one bus driver. But he also helps out with transportation. If I don't have a driver that's available, he'll help out.
Thank you.
Now, is any of that, does that include for the trips then for the seniors too?
Oh, yeah.
So it's the, it's the transportation?
And, yeah, it would be all the bus trips.
All, okay, any transportation, that's basically there, so it's, it's part of the programs we offer for any residents or seniors and that?
Includes taking the kids to the lake twice a week as well.
So it includes Parker program too?
And what was that total number for the salaries? For Parker? Twenty?
Transportation.
The drivers?
$20,000?
$20,094. $20,094, that's what I get.
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, one addition to the Parker program, we would also have to deduct opers and Medicare from those wages, so that would be an additional amount.
Okay.
Natalie, would, I, I didn't mean if somebody has some, but I'm just going to, any, I, I know you, we were, you, you sent me about raising some fees for the, you know, the talk about for the senior luncheon and stuff. But what about these fees here for the Parker program? Any thoughts on that? Are we too low? What do you think? Because I, I know there's some concern about, you know, the cost and then the revenue of it. We also know it's, it's a service recreation, but do you know when the last time we raised those?
Yes, it was '22.
'22. Any thoughts on, do you think, are we too low or are we could, I mean?
Yeah, definitely the.
I'm just kind of.
The resident fee and the grandchild fee is low.
I, I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
The, the resident fees and the grandchildren fees, of course, are lower, a lot lower. But we didn't want to, I mean, it was, it was in 2022 that we raised it. I don't know when they raised it before that.
Right. I think what we, I, we might have, if anybody, Council, remember, I think we might have kept the, those fees the same and just raised the non-resident fee.
I think we raised those.
No, I think we raised.
Yeah, you guys are.
So I think we raised them like maybe $50 or a hundred.
Yeah, it wasn't a real.
It was substantial, yeah.
It was nominal if it was raised.
Right. And at that time too, we were looking at other places that had programs that are $1,000 a week for their residents.
Right.
You know, we knew we couldn't jump at that high immediately, so.
Natalie?
Mm-hmm.
You said we had 28 kids and we have 12 helpers. Are these 12 people like staggered?
Yeah, they didn't.
Like two a day or three a day?
Some of them didn't, couldn't come in at certain days, one hardly worked. Yeah, they, they were staggered.
So there's usually like three on duty at the time, or how many do you have?
There were three people that opened and then three people that closed. And they were staggered and they would go home throughout the day, especially on Mondays and Fridays when we didn't need as many counselors. At the lake, we needed counselors and at the field trips, of course, we needed counselors. But if we didn't need them, we sent them home.
Do we want to go through the recreation budget a little bit? I know those, those are the two, I had two items written down and it was the salary for the hour and the employees.
The salaries went up this year.
Right.
Substantial, you know, we couldn't, couldn't find anybody who didn't work, so we were paying. So I think you'll see that's a difference this year compared to last year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Natalie, is there a reason why we are paying drivers to serve the senior lunches when many of the seniors have expressed their willingness to help with that? And that's how it used to be?
Yeah, they, I haven't had anybody come up to me and ask me to help. I, we didn't even have.
I've had quite a few residents that actually have said.
Really?
They've offered help to you, yeah, and you just said, oh, okay. But we currently are paying seven people to serve senior lunches. I mean, we have all four drivers there, you and Mary and Ronnie. It just seems like a lot.
I mean, there's a lot more people coming than they were. We're like, we hover over 85 to 110 people every lunch. We need the help. I, the only person I, I only know of one person that came up to me about lunch. We don't even get them for special events. We get very few. If you saw at the Haunted Hay Ride, we had three or four. We don't have that many people.
Yeah, well, I did have several people mention it, you know, they, they used to like doing that and then they would get the volunteer appreciation dinner at the end of the year and stuff too and.
Yeah, they haven't come to me this year. They have in the past, but not this year.
And you're open to that, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
So maybe we, we can put a little.
It's in, it's in the journal every month. It's in there about the volunteers, but I haven't had anybody come up to me and, and say that they wanted to help.
Okay, well then we'll, we'll have to let them, if you get anybody like that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, if they tell you something, tell them, come talk to me.
Yeah. Oh, and the.
And then we'll make sure we have something in the, like you mentioned, in the journal.
Right. Just a question too, how come we have drivers at the Walk Your Dog and the Walking Club?
Well, the Walk Your Dog didn't even happen this year at all. I think they went out twice early in the season. I think they went out twice early in the season. And what's, what's the other program?
The Walking Club?
The Walking Club is a volunteer. It's Debbie Deek. Kozak.
Okay. But Louise was?
She was, in the, initially she was doing it for me. Can't be at the office and do the walking program and answer the phone, so she was doing it for me. Till we had a volunteer come forward.
So now it's all volunteer?
Mm-hmm.
Do we wanna go through anything with Natalie on the budget or any?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, not only the Parker program, which runs, you know, eighteen thousand into the red. And Nikki said we have to add a little bit to that for OPRS. The transportation and I know Natalie said that very little bit of that is used for the Parkers and things like that. But what I got from, from Nicole's budget, I had transportation revenue of three thousand dollars. And what were you saying, three thousand?
Three thousand, two hundred and sixty.
Okay, so thirty-two sixty.
Did I not pass, was I supposed to pass these down?
Yes.
Operating supplies, fuel for vehicles, that's three thousand dollars, so that's a wash right there. Then we have in the budget repairs to the motor vehicles are five thousand dollars and transportation wages are twenty thousand dollars. So round numbers, I'm showing a deficit of twenty-five thousand dollars for the transportation. Would you agree with that, looking at your numbers?
I don't see the wages, so I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I've never seen wages.
Okay.
But I know I haven't, I have not increased the transportation since I've been here.
You mean what, the fees we charge? Yes.
They're the same. And they're only one way. Only charged one way.
I know we recert, you, you guys probably at the same time we talked about the Parker, we talked about that at, at that time too.
I don't believe that those were increased at all.
No, those weren't.
No.
Those weren't increased, but between the two of those, that's forty-three thousand dollars. You know, I, certainly for our residents, obviously I don't wanna make money, but when we're operating in the red, we have to kind of figure something out. And I'm only one vote, so I don't know what everybody else thinks about that or not. And I said it last week, you weren't here, but Parker program, my kids went to the Parker program. I think everybody's kids here probably went to, you probably went to the Parker program yourself.
Yes, I did.
Fred was here before there was a Parker program. I was here before there was a Parker. But that's a hefty bill when we're in the red also.
Things have gone up.
Oh, absolutely, and I don't, you know, again, our, our residents are residents, but I, I really don't want to subsidize non-residents. And I lump, you know, I don't mind giving grandkids, non-resident grandkids a break, but it's kind of a tough pill to swallow too. When you're operating in the red, they're really not residents. We're giving a break to the people who do live here and I understand that. But I think that's something for the, maybe for the rec committee to take a look at with Natalie and, again, I'm only one vote. So I don't know what anybody else thinks about these issues.
Mayor Collier?
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment and pretty much follow up with, with Councilman Spisnagle was saying. And I look at the, this is non-technical analysis. When I look at the number of non-residents that are willing to pay the amount that they pay, I think, just, just to me, that kind of says that there's still some value, even at that price, if a non-resident is willing to pay that for, for that kind of camp. So to take a look at both the resident and the grandparent or grandkid fee, I think is, is a very feasible thing to do for the rec committee. Not, you know, you have, you have more non-residents at the higher price than you actually have residents at the lower price. They see value in that.
Oh, they do, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
They do, because when we were on the committee, we looked at everybody else around us and this is a deal. So, so that's why we have a lot of non-residents.
The closest or the least expensive was like a thousand dollars a week.
Right.
And that, and that, at the time you were looking at it, we didn't even have, I mean, now we all know the increase in salaries and wages and finding the right people for that program. I mean, that was what, last year or Natalie, the year before where we, we were having some issues and we thought, well, we need to attract maybe some adults and some, a little more leadership there too. And of course with that, we paid a little more in wages.
And this year we went up twelve dollars, you know, for the minimum because everybody else was paying at least that.
Right.
Remember, we, I went to a show, tried to recruit some help, cause I knew I would have difficulty finding help this year.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Jennifer.
On the.
Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you. On the recreation draft budget, for other professional and technical services, you went from twenty-three at twenty-six hundred dollars to twenty-four at ten thousand, five, and in twenty-twenty-five, you're asking for twenty-five thousand?
Let me see what number that, what, what, which one am I looking at?
Three-ten, three-forty-nine, zero, zero, zero.
That's the event coordinators, the instructors, and that's the social worker, am I right? We did not have event coordinators until this year.
Don't they get paid out of the rental fee though?
They get paid out of my budget, but the renter does pay it.
So I, I don't get that. Where, where does the revenue show up then?
That's a question for Nikki.
Yeah, that probably goes into the rental.
The rental fee maybe?
I, I don't know that when we actually started using event coordinators, that there was any adjustment to the rental fee. I think that, that was just something that we, we decided to hire on. As far as, I mean, I'm not sure, I don't know that anyone's actually looked at the rental fee versus what expenses.
Separating it up, I got you.
How, how does it work? I'm trying to remember how we set that up.
Yeah, the seventy-five dollars is in the rental fee. We added that.
In the contract.
In the contract.
So it is in the, so we are getting seventy-five dollars more.
We raised it, we raised it.
Right, so we're getting the rental fee plus the seventy-five dollars.
Okay.
But it comes out of my budget.
And then it comes out, then it'll show as the expense side. But it's going into your budget in the revenue?
No, it goes in the rental. I don't know where it goes.
Then it should come out of the rental and expenses.
Mr. Mayor, it is coming into one thousand, five ninety, thirty-one hundred in her budget. It is, there's banquet hall rental and there's also community room T G Y rental.
Yeah, that's all in the recreation budget.
Correct.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And do we know what the line right after that is? Professional technical service trips? We went from fifty-four hundred dollars in twenty-three to almost thirteen thousand in twenty-four and more than doubling over twenty-seven thousand for twenty-five.
The trip budget? I can tell you it's gonna be more because we weren't doing as much before. I wasn't doing hardly any trips, now I'm doing more trips. I could cut that back if you want me to. I do usually two to three trips a month.
So where do we get the revenue then from that?
They pay their own way. So if I have a trip, they pay what the fee is plus two dollars for the bus, the bus fee. So it's paid by the resident.
So Nikki, do you know where that revenue coming in from the resident is?
So that is one thousand, five twenty-nine, thirty-one, zero, one, other cultural and recreational programs trips.
Okay. So we got revenue thirty-five hundred, twenty-two, twenty-three was sixty-six hundred. Twenty-four, we got revenue of six thousand, seven hundred, but we spent almost thirteen thousand. And we're anticipating twenty-five thousand but spending twenty-seven six.
Mm-hmm, I see that, true.
What I did is I, to estimate it, cause this is when it gets tricky, cause I have to account for every seat on the bus for the budget. So that's twenty-two seats, but I don't always sell out all twenty-two seats. So to get a P O, I have to, I have to ask for enough money for the whole bus, cause I don't know how many people are gonna sign up. So I had to go high. There's no way for me to know how many people, how many I wanna sell. Sometimes I sell out, sometimes I don't.
Yeah, Nicole, the figures seem normal for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, but as soon as we jumped to twenty-twenty-four, it looks like we're not, we're only collecting from like half the people on the trips.
For the budget number?
On twenty-four, right. If we're collecting sixty-seven hundred and we're spending twelve-nine, how did the other half not pay?
Where are you looking at the sixty-seven hundred?
On five-two-nine, three-one, oh, one, twenty-twenty-four.
And then it would be three-ten, three-forty-nine, three-one, zero, one.
And then you're looking at twenty-twenty-four, three-one, oh, one?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
For the trips.
Yeah, twelve thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five.
Twelve-nine-ninety-five?
Yeah.
Right.
That I can look at as far as the revenue. It looks like there was only sixty-seven hundred. I believe that is a budget amount for twenty-twenty-four, but I can get you the actual. In this, this actual budget, the first two numbers were actual, I think Ray had asked me last week. Twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three were actual and twenty-twenty-four were the budgeted items and twenty-twenty-five. So I can get you the actual numbers for that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Natalie, how many more trips did you budget for, for twenty-five versus twenty-four?
I just did three per month.
What's that?
I went high, I went three per month.
Okay, what do we, what do we do in twenty-four?
I wasn't involved in the budget process.
No, not in the budget, the trips.
And trips actual, I don't know.
No, I'm just saying, what's the difference between, you said you increased the trips?
It was, it's less, it's definitely less, cause I'm not doing as many at the end of this year. I don't know offhand, I didn't.
What would you say, an extra trip a month maybe or?
I, most of them, there were two to three a month, but not every month was there three.
Okay.
Do you have a record of them?
I do, but not like in a spreadsheet. I don't have a database to keep track of this stuff. It's all individual. A lot of it's manual, but we're starting to keep track of it in computer, but not in a spreadsheet per se.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
We did, Natalie and I did sit down last year about the budget and being my first year, I was kind of focusing on what we had done the prior year. So I did go down, we did sit down and go through the line items together last year.
Not like we did this year though.
No, this year we were much more detailed.
Right.
But being head of the department, I mean, you should have full knowledge of your budget and what you're spending and what your expenses are.
I don't, I don't have a data, I don't, I get pieces of paper. But I don't have a knowledge of what, where my budget is every day. I don't have access to a database that tells me that, I have paper and it changes all the time.
But we will get it, but none of the departments do, they, they would have to rely on Nicole or Melissa for that information, correct?
Correct. That's the, and the financial statements usually.
Right. But get back to the trips. So I think this, if we kept, let's say we want, you know, we're looking to reduce some of these items that Natalie has in there and Natalie said you could go back to the, keep the same amount that we had this year. It seems like our seniors were, not just our seniors, our residents were happy with the amount of trips we had this year. I, we got a really, we got some nice feedback the other day from one of our residents and stuff, correct?
Yeah.
So if we did keep it, if we didn't increase the trips and kept it the same, we still offered quite a bit for our, our residents as far as trips. Cause you have increased the trips from the previ, from the previous year, so the trips in twenty-four were increased from twenty-three even.
Definitely.
Okay. So that's.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, personally, I don't care if you have a trip a week or two trips a week, just as long as the income from those trips kind of helps pay for it and, and we don't run a big deficit. I don't think there is actually just my numbers here in, in, we're showing professional technical service trips. Revenue twenty-five-two, expense twenty-seven-six, that's only twenty-four hundred dollars. I mean, I mean, round numbers. So, I mean, that, to me, that's not, you know, not, not a bad deal.
Well, there is the, there is the bus driver wages and there's gas that's not included in that.
The bus driver wages are not included in that?
I don't think so.
Why would they not be included in?
They'd be in a different line.
The expense for the trip.
I think that's in a different line, I don't, am I right, Nicole?
Yes, they're paid through the wages, through the transportation wages.
That's why you saw a higher number.
But when we're, when we're, when we're looking at something, we need, when we're looking at one aspect, whether it be the service department, not only, I don't wanna seem like I'm picking on the recreation, but any department, if they're, if we wanna look and see what that picture looks like, we need all the information going in and going out of that project. It's just like if we do a road, in order to find out how much that road is costing us, we need all that information. And then revenue, how much grant money we're getting, we need all that information. So, and I know everything's on the spreadsheet, but, so it should be easy or relatively easy to take, okay, our trips for recreation, this is everything that goes into it. Here's all the revenue, here's all the, all the expenses, just like Parker program. It should be easy to bring us a spread, an Excel spreadsheet of, of the counselors. How many hours they, they pulled for that and everything. We should be able to say we, we wanna see all that information, it should be easy to break down. It should be. I mean, am I off base? You guys are the, right, so.
It could be estimated.
It could be estimated.
But what we're, like for the trips.
There'd be another time, you know, you have a driver, one trip may take four hours, one trip. You know, you have a driver, one trip may take four hours, one trip may take six, I mean, that's, you know, and everything involved in it, technically.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go, go ahead, go ahead, we can help.
No, I just, what, what, I, and I think this is what Brian's, the point he's getting at, and, and I'm interested also. If, if the trips are, you know, twenty-four hundred dollars costing us twenty-four hundred, but if the drivers are costing us ten thousand, that's, I, I'm just using that as a, you know, as a wild number, no, that's, you know, I think that's where, where you're, what you're looking at.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
I think that, um, we could work with Natalie easily enough to figure out how many tickets were sold, how long the driver worked, if we had to pay for, because often one of the rec department will go, if we have to pay for their ticket, the gas, that can be kinda worked out, um, easily in a spreadsheet, I think, if we all work together to get that information.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't wanna, you've got so much on your plate, I don't, I don't want you to get bogged down in it either. You know, I, um.
Rough guess?
But we, there should be a way, on the fly, to say, what does trip cost us? Yeah, when you get done with the trip, um, the rec department should be able to say, this is what the trip costs us, and this is what we made from that. This is our income from that trip.
How many hours?
I, I mean, am I?
No, I, I see a big discrepancy with those numbers and stuff.
No, you're correct.
You know, what we're taking in and what we're supposedly selling, and it's disheartening for the head of a department to say, I don't know budget, I don't have a spreadsheet. I don't, I mean, other departments do, the police department does, Rob does, I've seen copies of his budget that he keeps. That to me is way more concerning, especially when you're looking at paying out almost four times of what you took in.
Mm-hmm.
I know Natalie and, um, Ronnie and Nikki and Melissa have been working in that whole thing. There's no doubt, some department heads might have a, a, a little better, better handle on it, they might be full-time employees too. So they have a little more time to, uh, focus on that too. But I guess to get to the point of it, let's try to get to what we're looking for. So you're asking kinda to summarize, and a little more detail on, on the rec department, when it comes to the revenues and expenses related to each specific item, is that kind of it in a nutshell?
Well, if you don't know what you're spending, or in what you're bringing in, on, 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 on stuff, you know, if it's all just thrown into one pot, you can't really.
So why don't we do this?
Know what, what, what to do when it comes to, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how to pay for things, and now, I do have a, a question on transportation.
I'm gonna interrupt you.
Go ahead.
To get back, so we, we stay focused, Nikki, Melissa, and Natalie, I think we can work on that.
Absolutely.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Do you want me to charge for the hours that the driver, I mean, am I charging the resident for, to cover the cost of the driver? And the gas, is that what I'm hearing? Cuz I don't filter that in. Right now, it's just they pay for their fee for a ticket, and they pay two dollars for a bus fee, which was always done when I, when I started here.
Right, you follow the same, the way the program was run before.
I follow the same thing, but if you're asking me to cover the cost of the driver and the gas, that's gonna be a lot more detail. And a lot harder to do.
Cuz we're not doing that right now.
Right.
Well, it'd be a lot of work, I mean.
Right, no, I get, I, that's.
He's gonna go get gas one day, not necessarily for just that trip, you know, and I can't estimate on how long he's going to be out, you know, driving.
Yeah, I don't think we need, we're asking, I don't think council's asking to get, I, I think, I think we're, Nikki, you understand what, what council's asking?
I, I, yeah, I don't believe it needs to be that specific, but a list for every trip of X number of people, here's who they were, I mean, everybody's on the record.
I have that.
Here's what they paid, here's what we paid, you know, because.
I have that.
So she has it.
I have that, I don't have how long the driver was out, that I don't have, that's in payroll. And I know, I don't really see that budget. I don't see what I have in that budget, and I don't see what's expensed in that budget.
Well, you get the budget reports from Natalie, right, or?
I never see wages, I just started seeing it just recently on a couple things that we met, when we met, that's it.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
So just on the transportation, um, culture and rec programs, transportation, that's everything, right, for, for the, uh, what we brought in, that was three thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars, that's, that's everything that everybody paid, right? So we got operating supplies, uh, fuel for vehicles, that's three thousand dollars, so that's a wash. We got repair to motor vehicles, that's five thousand dollars, transportation wages, that's everything, I'm assuming, correct? That's, that's taking the, the residents when they call up and wanna go to the grocery store, that's taking these bus trips. That's taking, uh, the parkers to the lake twice a week.
Yes.
That's everything. So that's twenty thousand dollars a year, okay? So amortizing that over everything we do, uh, you should be able to come up with a, a roundabout figure to help shore up that, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar def, uh, deficit right there. So taking in everything we do, and amortizing that twenty-five thousand dollars over everything that you've got planned, see what I'm getting at? Those fees would have to increase by that much to cover the twenty-five thousand dollars.
So you do want me to include the?
I'm certainly one vote, I, I mean, uh, you tell me if I'm blowing smoke, if I'm wrong, or, or what? That's what I would, if I were, that's what I would like to have done.
I can help you.
Yeah.
But I, I think where we're at, and it's Nikki and Melissa can, the three of them can work together, and, uh, we know this isn't our last budget meeting regarding that, and so let's see what we can, uh, get some more detail and, and, uh, get it distributed to all council. Is that, that's, I think we're all in agreement with that. No, you're not, you're not, I think, and Natalie's good with that, everybody's good with that, so let's see what we can, uh, do with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Is that fair?
Yeah, I, I had one more question for Natalie.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how many weeks is the Parker program?
Seven.
So in seven weeks.
It's five days a week, it used to be four.
Fifty dollars a week that a child's paying.
Yeah.
Fifty dollars a week, that's ten dollars a day to have their child watched all day.
Yeah. That's really cheap. But we raised it, we did raise it in twenty-two.
To ten dollars now?
I don't remember what it was.
Ten dollars a day here.
Well, yeah, I don't remember what it was in tw, in twenty-one, but we did raise it in twenty-two.
But right now, we're paying, it's fifty dollars for the whole week per child.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, I thought maybe I had a wrong figure there, but.
No, that's.
Nope.
I mean, that is, I mean, when you're talking deficit, that's where a lot of that comes from.
Right.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
You have one, one other question, please, Nikki, I don't know if you can answer this for me, since it has to do with payroll, but the personal services, we went from thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three to projecting sixty-five thousand this year, which is over sixty-five percent increase. Three-ten, one-ninety, zero, zero.
So that would include Ronnie's wages?
Okay.
We've got Ronnie in there, we've got Natalie in there, um, and actually, it's just those two.
That's cuz Ronnie just started this year, and we didn't have an assistant.
So, I, but was Mary's salary coming out of rec at all, or is she coming out of?
That has never been separated, we could separate it if we need to, um, or if you would like us to, because she's down there till one, I believe, and then she comes to the village after that.
She leaves at, she leaves at twelve, no.
So.
And, and let me expound on, on Mary Dolansky's role. She does do a lot of my support down there, okay, and sometimes that's a thing, so, because whether she's down there on that computer or up here on that computer, so she might not physically be up here or physically be down there, that doesn't mean, when she's down there, she does do a lot, she works on the journal and does other things, she's just, you know, she might be there, but that doesn't mean she's doing all recreation, just, I mean, and that's like super common, okay? Of course, when she's here, but that doesn't mean, sometimes when she's here, she might not work on some recreation thing, it's just, and that's the versatility you could, you can have when, because of these computers. I mean, that's just it, you know what I mean, cuz a lot of stuff, uh, that Mary does, uh, not only for supporting me, but for supporting the office, you know, is, is computerized, you know, so doesn't really matter where she is. Just to kinda let you know that, cuz somebody, well, you know, you got three people, what, you know, and it's not, a lot of the time, she's doing stuff for me.
Well, we have, um, our clerk of courts is part-time, correct?
Correct.
Okay, because residents have noticed a lack of anybody at the front window, and Nikki, obviously where she's at, can't see if somebody comes up to the front window. And if the clerk of courts isn't there, and Mary's not there, I don't know how Nikki and Melissa would know unless somebody knocks.
Do you wanna hire another employee, we can do that.
No, just we hired an employee to be up here, the part-time position has been filled now.
Yeah, I, you know. Let me, let me just tell you, uh, Mary's role, because if that's how, how you're defining it, she fills a lot of roles, not only between rec and, um, helping me out of ministry, I'm pretty self-sufficient on a lot of things, and I think this office will tell you that, okay? So it's not like she's doing emails for me, or communicating with organizations, or anything like that. The journal, which is a very big task, a lot of, she helps, we got two other people, Nikki and Melissa, would you say she does a lot of support in that department? We have Lisa over there by the window, but we decided to separate the building department, and I really feel that's functioning well, okay? And, you know, it's not uncommon, some communities, you go in, you don't see anybody, you might hit a buzzer, you might, they might ask you why you're there, or whatever, and then you get to the right person. I would really, you know, maybe, if, if I have a resident that says they have come here during our working hours and haven't been able to get any attention, I'd be shocked, they might look and there's no one at the window, but then they see Lisa across on the other side. For them to say they can't look and see nobody there, there is somebody there, but maybe they think there's nobody there, they could walk and say, Lisa, I know you're the building department, can you help me? I really feel that we do a very good job accom, accommodating people, and I feel we're even doing a better job now, accommodating our commercial end of our, um, they're not residents, but part of our community. You know? I, I, I think what we've done, we've, I've tried to, with Melissa, you know, we're a small community, sometimes we have people, residents, that come here just to maybe share a conversation with somebody, which is okay too, but sometimes that conversation goes from five minutes to a half hour to an hour. You know? I think we're doing, I, I think we're doing a, a pretty good job there. So, but I, I, you, you wanna, if, if, somebody wants to tell me how to manage a job is one thing, if you wanna stick to the budget, what this meeting's about, go ahead, if, if we can, you, you wanna talk about make, manage, how I manage the place, let's move, let's go right, let's do it. Let's do it, it's not on the agenda, let's do it. What do you want, you want someone at the window? Are we getting that many, how many, how many complaints are we getting, are we getting that, are we getting that?
Mr. Mayor, I've had no one complain.
I had, I had somebody asked me, they'd like the job of being at the window.
If, if that's an issue, Mr. Mayor, if.
I, I haven't experienced it.
Yeah, i, i, if it is, I mean, it's simple, I know the dispatch has a buzzer, a, a ringer, why don't you just put a, press a button for service, if there's nobody there, that would solve that.
Or we can, we can take the, we could take the clerk.
There's a buzzer.
We could.
There's a buzzer.
At, at, at the dispatch window, there is, not the other one.
We also have a buzzer.
They also have a buzzer.
I've heard, I've answered the door when there was no one there for, there's a buzzer.
Where is it?
Right in the middle on the, right on the glass.
I must've walked past it a hundred million times.
A million times.
Well, I probably don't even, oh, okay, well, then that solves that, okay.
I would love to have more employees. Chief wants more employees. He'd love that, but, but I think the reason we're, we're down to where we're at is, is what we're talking about right here. Maybe someday we could have somebody, um, sit there, actually, we're, we've talked about maybe another employee, cuz we're talking about bringing payroll back, okay, at the first of the year, there's been quite a bit of discussion about that, okay? We do that, um, we might have to have some help there, we might be coming to you there, or we just might, you know, is it, is it, you know, fair, so, um, we changed, what really changed is, what changed at window there was taking the building clerk and moving the building clerk to the other side. When we had the building clerk on this side, then they were able to answer, so now they're on the other side. I don't, I, I, I'm not even looking back at that, I think it's really functioning well, how, how it's going.
Oh, yeah.
I, I really, I really do, I think our building department's expanded because of what's going on around us. Okay. Does any, you wanna, whatever, whatever council wants to discuss.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest the, maybe the rec committee meet, uh, with Natalie and discuss these items here, I don't know if you wanna do that. Move it to that committee, and then come up with some sort of a recommendation, maybe, I don't know, uh, if, if you wanna do that. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, I think one of the things we talked about was Natalie and Melissa and Nikki get together, and, and they have been, they've been really going through their budgets too, like the other departments, and, um, see, maybe get a more clearer spreadsheet for everybody.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
So I know we've been talking about raising the price for the lunches, cuz it doesn't cover the lunches. And even if I raise the price, it's not gonna cover, so I just need a little, what you want me to do, like, whoever's gonna have this meeting with me, do you want it covered? Cuz that will determine how much I raise the price. If we're looking to cover all the expenses, then, you know, it does, that seven dollars doesn't cover lunch.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, Nikki, where on the budget lines, do those come in and go out?
So the senior lunches is gonna be, um, the senior services, one thousand, three-ten, four-twenty, thirty-one-ten for the expense.
Okay.
And then senior services as well in the revenue, one thousand, five- And then senior services as well in the revenue, one thousand, five, twenty-nine, thirty-one, ten.
Those are actually pretty close. But we don't have the actual, that's just a budgeted number under expense, right, of ten thousand?
Right.
Because we've taken in eleven thousand, three hundred and fifty-five so far this year against that.
Right, and we, I can get those numbers next week when we have the financials, we can look at those.
Okay.
May I call a graph?
Yes.
I have one question, and then, and then Mr. Alexander has a question. By the time he gets here, I'll be done. My, my question is, Natalie, you, you just mentioned that the seven dollars doesn't cover the lunch. You mean either meal itself, or you're talking about the whole, you know?
Even the meal.
I mean, that, just, it's my, just my question is, does the seven dollars cover the meal?
No.
So the meals are, are more than what?
We subsidize the meal.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay. You know how much?
I didn't change that price. I mean, it's different all the time. It, it depends on the meal, it depends on
Ballpark, is it, you know, dollar, two, three? That's a recommend it.
Say a buck and a half, I don't know.
Okay. You guys don't work, that's a recommend it thing, so.
Okay, well, that's not negligible. I mean, if you're talking about a buck of meal.
No, that's, that's just for the meal. We buy the paper products, we buy the salad dressing, we, you know, there's some, there's things that we buy. The tablecloths, there's a lot more expense there.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was saying you had a resident, I mean, someone in the audience with a question. I didn't know.
Hey, you want to come to the mic?
Yeah, I'm trying to change. Jeff Alexander, seventy-three, twelve Walton Road. That was my question before Ray asked. I've had this conversation with several seniors as, even two hours ago. They think that seven dollars covers it. I said, there's no way. It's got to be, the village has to pay something for the caterer to do that. And they're telling me, no, seven dollars is too much to start with. So nobody's ever told me, but I, from being in business, I know you can't get that for seven dollars. That's why I was going to ask, do we pay three or four dollars?
It depends on the meal and depends on the caterer.
Okay, I mean, is there, I heard a dollar fifty, is that close?
Guessing. Just averaging it.
Dollar fifty, two dollars.
So it could be two, ten dollars, close to ten dollars, could be, probably is with the paper products and everything, or better.
Plus you have your dessert and your drinks.
Right, right.
I mean, there's a lot added on to it.
No, I know it, you can't do it for seven.
And the people who are there working.
Yeah, the dessert is not covered.
Right. I, I, I agree with all that. I was just, I was trying to explain to these people that there's no way that's, you can have that, you know? And, uh, I've never heard mention before, actual cost, or
And you'll agree, you've seen the difference in the amounts that we're getting now.
Yeah.
Because caterers not making any money either.
No, I, I, I don't have any problem with it, just that so many people don't understand that the village is contributing to that. You know, they think it's, they bring up Maple Heights, they bring up Solon, you know, we're this big and those towns are this big. And we can't do what they do. And that was just, I was curious myself, you know, dollar-wise.
You know, Jeff, I've had that kind of, what they're, I don't know about Solon, but I know the Garfield and stuff. Some of those meals are subsidized meals by the county. Because we've already talked a little bit, we've had some seniors mention to that, mention that to us. And I think you might have even have discussed that in your recreation.
Is that like a grant money or something?
Yeah, and, but to meet those
And it's tough.
It's tough, very tough to meet those.
Oh, yeah.
You know, uh,
Probably size-wise.
requirements.
Yeah.
And demographics
Sure.
and medium home income and all that, okay? So we're not comparing apples to apples.
Right.
Okay, and, and so I've, I've explained that.
Mayor.
The only thing we're not, we're not do, remember this, this isn't the only thing we subsidize, we subsidize garbage. Maybe, maybe council should look at that.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
When Councilman Spitznagle and I were on rec, Bedford has a grant that they receive for their senior lunches. But they've got a full-time grant writer. So they have somebody that can dedicate all the time to, you know, finding these grants and, and writing them up and making sure that they go through properly.
They have more than that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Last year Natalie and I went through this, and Natalie laughed at me when, when I told her I was going to look into getting this grant. I did call Bedford, and, and they called me back, and he said, uh, his first comment to me was, uh, how many people do you have in your department working on this? And I said, it's me. And he said, well, good luck with that. He says, we've got a full-time staff working on this, and it's not only with the county. It's not only getting the grant. You have to have paperwork, a mountain of paperwork to give them every so often as to how much came in, how much you spent, all that stuff. It's, I mean, it's, it takes a full-time staff to do it, and I just, I just couldn't, couldn't do it.
Can I, since you guys have a little knowledge of it, Natalie has some knowledge of it. When you enter in those programs, I want to come to that program, and I don't live in the community. Can I come to that program?
Yes.
Yes.
I knew that answer, but I wanted, so it's something to think about. This is our residence that we're trying to give some socialization and a meal at the same time. It, I look at it as a program, okay? Senior lunch, I look at it as a program. It's not just about, I know some people take it to go, um, but they still, and you know, do we really know if everybody gets a good balanced meal every day? We know we have that opportunity to give them that once a month with some programs, some education, some socialization, some fun. But whatever you want to do. You want to look at, uh, we can get the, get the numbers on that too. If you want to look to, uh, make it more equitable for what we charge. Thanks, Jeff, were you done? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We can look at that too.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to sound like I'm, you know, want, want, I know our rec program is for our residents, and we've always subsidized it, and as far as I'm concerned, we can still subsidize it. My big thing was, and, and the mayor makes a great point about the senior lunches. It's, you know, it, it's, it's, it's for the socialization and to get, get people out and doing something. And again, is, is, you know, did they have a decent meal today, you know? Who knows? But, uh, a- as I look at that, you know, my round figures was the rec program is, from the services and everything, was down a little bit over a hundred thousand dollars. So my goal in looking at all the red ink is trying to shore that up a little bit. I don't want to seem like I'm, you know, harsh and, and just want to get rid of our rec program. That's not what I want to do. But I think there should be some sort of a, a balance there. As, uh, Councilwoman Canzoni said, fifty dollars a week to babysit your kid? I don't know what parent would not take that deal. So, uh, that's where I'm at, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I know, I know one thing I can do is, we'd get some non-residents that do come to lunch. I can charge a different fee like we do for the Parker program. I can do that for the trips, that, they pay a little bit larger fee. If you wanted me to do that, I can do that. I did that when I was working in Independence, we did charge more for the non-resident. If that's something that
I think that would be more like the committee try to adjust and tweak. Once we can get some better figures
Right.
on payroll and what are we spending where on the drivers and, and everything, and your, your figures with the trips. To make sure they balance, plus the two dollars for gas and stuff. Because that really should be a lot closer on our figures here. But to actually change fees and everything else, I think we need more discussion on all that. You know, for the Parker program, for lunches, for, for anything on those.
Sounds good.
Because it is a benefit, I mean, and it is a program for the residents and
Sure. I, I personally think that we should make our senior lunches a bus trip to Bedford senior lunches.
There you go.
I disagree with that. I disagree with that. I think it's important that our residents stay together, so they learn who their neighbor is, maybe gain a friend, somebody that's close, maybe somebody that
I can tell you stories.
What's that?
I can tell you a lot of stories, good stories about our residents
No, I, I, I know some of those stories.
that don't know anybody, they did not know people that live right next door. They've come to our programs and they've now gotten to know their neighbor. And they're, it's, it's amazing to see, especially these widowers. There's a bunch of guys that come now and they're like buddies. And I remember one of them
They all sit at the same table.
And they all, yeah.
There's a table.
They sit at the same table, and I, I mean, I went on a trip with them last week, and the two were arguing about something. But they were, you know, it was a funny argument, they were laughing and stuff. And, and I remember when I met each one of those guys, and one of them said to me, I don't even have anybody to go to dinner with. Because I, my wife died. And I said, now you know, Joe, you can go to dinner with him. I mean, I've seen a lot of amazing stories. And the, the chair aerobics, same thing, we, we get a big crowd for that. That's a free program. But you know how I make it free? We watch a YouTube video. But I have to have a staff member in there the whole time to do the skip, to skip the, um, the commercials. So either Mary or I are in there doing that. Because, and then there's one of us in the office to answer the phones. But they love that program, and it's free, and they love coming. And then we get at least probably about ten people coming every morning, and we're doing it on Mondays. And they wanted it more than once a week, so we're doing Mondays and Fridays. So, I mean, I, there was a time when we didn't have any programs. I think you remember that, Brian?
Yes.
During COVID, we didn't have any programs. And now I'm seeing so many people coming in that door, and it's nice to see. It's a change from two thousand twenty.
What's our lunch now? How many, we, we're almost at what, eighty?
We've gone up to a hundred and ten.
Hundred and ten.
It's our highest, but it kind of, it goes from eighty-five to a hundred and ten every month.
That's good.
And we get some people that, you know, that used to take out, now they're coming in. So we've increased on the number of dine-ins. I mean, I could eliminate the takeouts if you want to, there's a number of options we can talk about at the recreation meeting.
Yeah, and, and the, the takeouts were created during COVID.
That was why we did takeouts, because some people didn't feel comfortable coming in, and it's changed. It's changed a lot in the last couple of years. I mean, it was just a few years ago, we were still going through that.
Right.
A lot has changed.
Anything, um, so we have a couple of things, a couple of things to get for, for Natalie, and we can have Natalie, we'll have you back, okay? In the meantime, uh, anything you have to, um, as Melissa, Nikki and Natalie go through, we can get it to council, myself, um, kind of look at everything and go from there. And, uh, anything else for Natalie at this time? No?
We did have, as the mayor alluded, or not alluded, but said before, uh, we did have a couple ladies up here. When was that, a week or two ago, said they raved about the programming.
Yeah, I think I shared that with them.
So you did a good job.
They're like me keeping them busy.
Natalie, anything for us, so it sounds like to have a council, uh, s- uh, separate committee to talk about the fees and
Yeah, this is good for me. I just want to know what you want me to do. I'm just doing what was done.
Right.
Add some more programming, I'm pretty much doing the same thing. I don't, the first thing I don't think of is raising fees, but when I know we have to, um, I'll do it, we need to.
Okay, well, you're more than welcome to stay.
Sure.
Are you?
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you, Natalie, have a good evening. Chief, you'll think, but are you, are you okay staying a little bit? I know Tom, we're going to have Tom go through, um, some of the, the draft. We don't have to get real deep into the woods, in, in, into the weeds, Tom, because I know we are having executive session next week, to kind of even, you know, and have Brendan here. Uh, Chief, are you, you, can you stay a little bit longer? We appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, are you guys good? You want to go to, I'll ask you guys, you want to go with the chief, or you want to start with Tom? I think we can get Tom through
Yeah.
a little quicker, and, uh, and then we'll have more time to spend with the chief.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question for Jennifer and Mr. Weeden. Since we are going to meet in executive session next week with Mr. Jordan and, uh, do we need to have an economic development meeting ahead of time? Is there anything that you need to bring up or, or Ray?
No, if we're, if we're going into executive session next week with Mr. Jordan, just, that's fine with me.
Unless there's something else.
Unless there's some more detail of anything that you
There's nothing that I, I want to bring up before that may conflict with, uh, with what, uh, what's going to happen behind, you know, so.
Yeah, no.
But if there is something separate from, from that, is there a reason for us to meet at six?
Well, I, I don't know what you had on the agenda, it's up to you, whatever you have on the agenda.
Well, it was, it was just basically we were going to have Mr. Jordan, but he couldn't, he couldn't make it next week at, uh, six anyway. So he wouldn't be able to make it until I think seven-thirty, he just texts back, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay?
Yeah. If we have, if anything comes up otherwise, I'll just let you know.
Okay, that's, I mean, we can always have a meeting, uh, the first, first week in December, if, if, if we need. Does that sound?
Yeah, if it's necessary.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Jordan. Do you have, do you have the, uh?
Do we have the agenda?
Okay, good. You could sit down if you want, it's up to you.
I've been sitting a while. Actually, I was at another meeting, sitting.
Okay, all right.
So, um, ordinance twenty, uh, I'm going to come back to the, uh, the, the draft one and handle a couple of the other items that were a little easier.
Yeah, that's good, because that's probably going to be the more lengthy one.
We, there is under twenty twenty-four fourteen is to terminate the, um, the abatement for what, that, it was for the Smith Obie project. Um, that was the LLC that owned the property, that's what the contract reads. Uh, Smith Obie was acquired by a investment firm, and the new management has decided not to move forward with their expansion. Uh, we had a, went pretty far down the, uh, lane. We had a agreement with them relative to what they, with the expansion, and they got two things from us, land and, uh, an abatement. Under the abatement, since they're not building the building, they're not going to get the abatement, we need to terminate it. And then the other one is the, um, uh, the, um, the land. We will be getting the land back under our agreement. We had a reversionary ability just to deal with this certain circumstance. When you do so, you have to notify, uh, the county and the, um, the housing council, which is in the state statute organizing the CRA, these councils were set up. It's just a letter, I, in this case, I believe it will come from the, uh, finance director to them, notifying them that they are doing that. And it's, it's really just satisfying the state statute requirement. Uh, just so you know, the, the CRA in Walton Hills also has a housing component, and a result that housing council is in effect there. Subsequent to the meeting, I am recommending that you're going to have ultimately, uh, by a half a dozen major abate by half a dozen major abatements, uh, because of the redevelopment of the Ford site. And your tax increment review committee and your, um, housing council, council should consider making those appointments, uh, or updating those appointments, um, sometime after the new year. Does anybody have any questions about that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman Allen.
Do we have to pay back the money or?
Actually, no, they, they, uh, they paid us, we had the money and it's our understanding that no, they are not going to receive the sale price back.
I thought that that was part of the agreement.
Right.
Okay.
So, um, it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Once this is complete and it's terminated and the deal is done and finished, will you be turning that around and trying to sell it again to someone else?
Um, it goes back into the land bank and yes, ideally, that's what it's there to do. You know, probably because of its limited size, uh, be more towards retail. The only real industrial use was with the neighbor, given the configuration and size of the parcel. So it's likely to be a retail use. And a retail use would be after we talk about the other CRA issues. It would be increased amount of jobs being made across the street and more people needing someplace to go. It's, that property will be, uh, more valuable as, as the, the property across the streets being developed.
Any questions on, are you done with that one, Tom?
I am, any other questions?
Just real quick, Tom, what were the appointments you said that we should be looking at at the beginning of the year?
The tax increment review committee, you have two appointments there and the community reinvestment housing, um, board. And I will tell you that last board is usually used only when you get into trouble. Fortunately, the, the, the village has not been in any trouble. If someone felt they were not receiving the appropriate amount of abatement, the county requires a local board to review their complaint. And the other way you get into trouble is that, um, the, if someone is receiving abatement and the house went vacant or wanted to disrepair, the city had the right to remove the incentive. Um, between, before they're impaneled, we'll probably have the building department review, uh, the non-commercial ones and make sure that the, uh, homes that do receive the abatement are, um, you know, up to date, et cetera, and, uh, in good repair.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else on, that's item B?
Um, I actually did cover the, the reversionary ability of the city to take back the land. And, uh, I wanna, you know, Nikki and Mr. Montello have been inundated with paper from outside council relative to the number of agreements that we're doing. Um, and I appreciate them, uh, keeping up with it. Um, but, you know, we gotta go into an escrow agreement, there's a series of agreements you're authorizing in order to get that land back, uh, and transferring it back to the city. So, um, that's ordinance twenty twenty-four seventeen. And, um, the one you may not be familiar with, um, is twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four thirty-three. The tax increment review committee, um, had a meeting during the summer that, uh, your fiscal officer attended that reviewed the outstanding commercial abatements. And that'll be a practice going forward that the, uh, the village will have to, uh, participate in. There's some training coming up that I've made the fiscal officer aware of and, uh, maybe we'll be able to send staff to about reporting every year. So they basically look at the agreement, make sure that they're receiving the appropriate amount of, uh, abatement. And that, you know, these job numbers that we're gonna talk about on a new one are kept. So you go in, you ask the company how many jobs and, uh, the fiscal officer, uh, verifies them through Rita and makes sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing and that they're also getting the abatement they're appropriate to. It's usually in the first couple of years, there's usually some back and forth relative to the abatement, sometimes there's a delay in receiving it. Often the job numbers can be an issue. I will tell you the previous one where they absolutely did nothing like Smith Obie, in my experiences, they're like, there's probably only about two percent ever do that. It's more about someone not meeting a job market. Back in two thousand eight, you know, during the, uh, the great recession, you know, uh, most of the companies for two years did not meet their job goals. And in that instance, the Turk was able to use their discretion to allow them to continue receiving the abatement and get back on their feet. And that's the kind of issues that you, you deal with there. So in this instance, NPK, uh, was receiving a commercial abatement, uh, they met or exceeded their job goals and their investment numbers. They voted to, um, uh, found them in compliance and then continue their abatement. And this is just confirming, uh, that outcome. Uh, next year, they'll ask, uh, your fiscal officer, did you, did you inform council of our recommendations? She will say, yes, I did, back in November and they'll, uh, she'll provide them the date of this meeting indicating that you also reviewed how NPK performed. Also, we'll be cleaning up this other one with Smith Obie, that'll be done this year, so we'll reflect that we terminated the other agreement, uh, so that, that'll be taken care of as well.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Tom, uh, thank you, Tom, on that twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three for the NPK, do we have anything in writing from them staying this?
Oh, I, I did, I, I, um, no, we, we, there's a whole form they fill out and sign as part of that July review. Uh, it's quite painful, as Nikki has now learned, the process. And they submit that to the city and then she checks back with Rita and, um, usually the building department, uh, about the investment. So, um, yeah, there was, there was a form, it was reviewed by the city staff, we could supply it to you subsequent to the meeting if you'd like.
No, I don't need it, I was just wondering if, if there is a written.
Yeah, and there's a formal meeting that's held downtown where everybody looks at it, so.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the same, uh, thank you, I was gonna ask the same or similar question, uh.
The schools, by the way, also attend the meeting, so I just wanna make sure because they are affected by these.
Okay, I was gonna ask a similar question because when I, when I read the, uh, first whereas on twenty twenty-four thirty-three, it states that council has received and reviewed the recommendations from the village, uh, one act of, uh, CRA. I think, so is there like an executive summary, not necessarily the full, I don't know how many pages?
No, that's okay, no, I, I'm laughing, cause I do this at, at, uh, while there's a degree of formality, there's a degree of informality. The only thing that happens is that there was a vote, which your fiscal officer could attend to. But they will send to the village a, um, a copy of the recording and then the city is supposed to transcribe it, its own minutes, and then send it back next year at the meeting. So currently, there is no approved minutes because of that, uh, there's no form that the, the county provides. Um, there's just, um, frankly, at this point, the fiscal officers word that that's how the vote went, other than the audio recording that we have that's not even transcribed. And actually, I don't even believe the county has forwarded that to us. So, uh, right now, we don't have anything. The only thing we have is the, what the company sent to, um, the village, uh, but we don't have anything that the Turk sent to the village.
The what?
The tax increment review council.
Okay.
Has forwarded their findings, it implies that in there. I, I provided that language to the law director, it's standard language used by every community. I'm sorry, there's not a written, uh, form, there's nothing that I'm aware of.
So you, you mentioned the, the, uh, NPK exceeded?
Yes.
So, but, are, are this council primarily to know what that, how that actually worked out?
Oh, on that, we, I will, I will forward to council, I will forward to council their form.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but actually that whereas is indicating that you received a recommendation from the Turk. That's not what you're gonna get, you're gonna get something from the company indicating that they have met and exceeded it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that's for Ellen.
Tom, who is on this tax incentive review council, I mean, are these?
Well, the majority, the majority of the board is comprised of county officials, just, um, and you know, the county's the one that sets your tax rates and sends you the bill. So they regulate this, you know, when you do these abatements, we give them a copy of the agreement and then it's up to them to give a correct bill to whatever company is gonna get it. So then they ask you to come down, you gather sort of information from the company and you go down there once a year and say, hey, uh, this is how the company performed and then they vote on it. The voting member, in addition to the county people that hold the bulk of the, uh, thing, is the school board has a vote. Um, and the, the city has two representatives on it. And then, um, the housing officer or whoever represented, in this case, it was, um, your fiscal officer. Um, it's actually not a voting member, they just supply the information.
And do they do this based on like a sliding scale or there are guidelines that if it's this amount of?
Good question, no, that's what the board's there to comprise, it's, it's usually a good, good job. In my, in a practical sense, and I've attended more than my fair share of them, um, it's usually a very bright line, whether they're in compliance or not. Either the company usually is failing, they've moved out, they've never, never did the improvement, uh, usually have evidence of that and a building, uh, permit. Then on the jobs numbers, eh, you know, there's a, um, usually we're requiring our agreements that they reach the numbers within two years of the completion of construction. That usually is enough time for them to do it. I try to advocate for people to be conservative about their numbers. Uh, and that they don't, some people think, well, if I exaggerate the number, you know, I'm gonna get more abatement.
Right.
Well, this is where you get into troubles and then that annual review and they, they fall short. So I ask them to be more conservative in their numbers. I do and, uh, so that's it.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Just, I was also there for the vote, as was Matt Stuzinski, was there as well, so I can attest that they recommended to continue the agreement.
Thank you, Sean.
I could change that wording a little bit maybe with the wording.
No, I think everybody's okay with it. And you, Tom, you guys are okay with it. Anything else related to that, Tom, with thirty-three? Twenty twenty-four thirty-three, any questions for Mr. Jordan on that?
So we're left with twenty twenty-four thirteen?
I think that's correct.
Okay, um, the, um, twenty-four is authorizing, uh, the community. I just want to remind council that there's no vote this evening, this is just an item for discussion. Uh, we're still in the notice period to, um, the schools where we give them a certain amount of time before you vote on a piece of, uh, CRA legislation. And we're in that period currently, so tonight is just about discussing it. Basically, Great Day, um, um, is a, a company that is going to occupy the building that the developers built on spec, the draft one building. Great Day Adventures, uh, it's described in your thing, they do a lot of outdoor equipment, manufacture, they assemble, uh, and that's what they do there. They're lawyers, at some expense to the company, I've given a rather, uh, you know, lengthy description, but anyways, that's what, that's what they do there. Um, they're consolidating from two other communities and moving, uh, two hundred forty-eight jobs there. Um, day one, the c- community, the village of Walton Hills should receive about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in payroll taxes. And then it goes up to about four hundred thousand dollars in payroll taxes at the end of year five. The way the, the agreement and the application is organized, they just guarantee the number of full-time and also part-timer there, uh, employees that they plan to employ there. So in this case, they also went into some detail about construction, which is about twenty-five. So in addition to two hundred forty-eight being there the first year, you'll probably see some benefit of the twenty-five employees that were there to help construct the building or, or get it going. The building is there, um, the rent, it's just a shell, some of you may have been in the building, it's just a shell currently. Uh, the parking lot, the interior and even the detention basin will need a little work, more than a little, it's about two point five million dollars worth of work in order for, um, it to be used for the purpose that they're using it for. In exchange for the city or the village receiving those payroll taxes, uh, the village is offering them seventy-five percent for fifteen years, which is the maximum under the revised rules, uh, for CRAs. Now, why that much, why, how much, why that much? Well, frankly, um, because of the build-out is, um, only at two point four million dollars. In order to get, it's only a fraction of what the actual, um, the lost property taxes are only a fraction of the two hundred fifty thousand dollars you're gonna receive in the first year, let alone the, what you're gonna get by the end of year five. So the thought behind it is that we'd maximize, max out the amount available, given the village's return under the jobs. Um, and again, as you know, we only get a small sliver of the property taxes, also we get only a portion of the increased value at two point five million dollars. Uh, the schools is really the bulk of it. Uh, we are meeting with the schools hopefully shortly to discuss, uh, what they, uh, will be providing to them, uh, but it's still very substantial. And really, in this case, only a fraction of what the payroll is. That's really the simple exchange in it, is how many jobs and payroll in exchange for what percentage of real estate, uh, taxes, um, that they're, you're foregoing. As you all know, uh, we're not getting anything currently, so it's only on the upside. You know, I, actually, the meeting I just left, uh, we've had a month-long discussions about CRAs and, um, yeah, I've looked at this several different ways. There's only an upside, especially in a circumstance where you're getting a ten million dollar payroll moving into the, the village and you're, you're abating real estate of only two point five million dollars. You know, you have the benefit of that spec building, which is somewhere between ten and fifty million dollar building already built. Uh, so, um, you know, this one is very much in the, the village's favor, uh, relative to what you're foregoing and what you're receiving. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
Go ahead, Councilwoman Nielsen.
The, uh, the company is Great Day?
Great Day Adventures, it's one of the largest privately-held businesses in northeast Ohio, according to Cranes last week.
Did, do they, do they operate, now your, your, one company is coming out of Macedonia, one out of Twinsburg.
Right.
And are they under that name right now?
No, they, they have several companies.
So they're gonna, it's gonna be a combination of the companies coming together and they'll come under the name of, uh, Great Day?
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe they've acquired a number of companies, they're now under one ownership and they will be consolidating. Whether those entities will technically be operating out of there, uh, I'm not sure, but as long as they have jobs, that is, they will fulfill their requirement.
But that, that way, but they're taking over the whole building, so it doesn't really matter, it's.
Yeah, yeah.
They're taking the whole building.
There won't be, it won't be hard to track, so you know, your agreement was with the property owner? The property owner, vendor is in agreement with Great Day. So, um, we just, whoever, whatever entities are reporting out of that address, you can track through Rita to make sure that those numbers are being reached. In addition, there will be that reporting form every year that's reviewed by the city and then forwarded to the Turk and then eventually it comes to you back there. But, uh, um, usually they're well-reviewed in the summer.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
So is this going to be like manufacturing it or just us bringing things in and assembling everything?
Well, those are very.
And the offices, I mean, they're, that company, I, I know who they are and I don't know, they're, I mean, they do so much stuff with the construction.
Right.
I didn't know if they're actually going to build things in this building. I didn't know if they're actually going to build things in this building?
They are, and, uh, in their application, I, I, uh, I'll, I'll read what they said, but, um, you know, from my own research.
And tell us where you're reading it from, Tom, because we have it here too.
Page five.
A lot of pages. Where are we at?
Uh, well, I'm.
Which page, five?
Hold on, uh. Hold on. I, I, I will read it from you, hold on. It's actually on page one of the application. And I'll hold up if you can, that one, not the, the agreements a little.
Oh, yeah, we don't, I don't think we have the application.
It's actually an exhibit to the agreement.
Okay, we're, yeah.
Exhibit A?
It's in there.
Yeah, it'll be exhibit A.
Gotcha.
Manufacturing and assembly of building products for distribution to installation locations. The manufacturing of activities include heat treatment of glass sheets, cutting and assembly of framing components, and kitting of construction materials. There's, you know, just very little of, you know, someone, if you think a roll of steel is going in there and it's coming out, a patio umbrella, that's not it. It's, uh, the canopy is assembled at one place and they are doing a lot of assembly there. But they do do, um, a- assembly of, of, of some of their parts. That was part of the conglomeration of what I understand Great Day Adventures are. But there's also a part of it that they do installations and just straight-out construction work for, uh, for enclosures. One of their companies was patio enclosures. So, um, you know, there is some construction companies that work out of there. Uh, there is some patio equipment that is, uh, components that are assembled there. There's the, a whole gamut of different companies that do it. But, um, since the pandemic, this is a very growing, uh, type of company that services this industry. I, I'll be honest with you, the mayor called me up and said, he got a call from the developer and a ten million dollar payroll is moving into the village. I was very skeptical. I did, we, I did meet with him and we talked with him and even then I thought, I kept thinking that they were inflating that ten million dollar number. But through the due diligence period under the application process, that is, on day one, they will, I thought it was going to be ten million at the end of year five, but the number went up over the year fives and there's a very detailed schedule. That detailed schedule was in part, uh, myself and the law, your, uh, the law department's effort to just make sure that they understood that at that annual Turk review, that they're hitting their benchmarks. And they seemed very comfortable in doing so.
We're excited, we're excited. I, I know I am and I, I'm sure it's a great thing for the community. I know Tom, uh, and John and Nikki have been involved in the process. We're, we're excited about it. I mean, as council, I'm sure council is too, as you look at this agreement more and more, which is very similar to the, uh, Cardinal Health agreement, would you kind of?
It is, it is. Cardinal Health, if you're going to look at the two, has a very fancy building. They're going to have a lot of security, very highly technology. That building is actually going to, they, there's, it's a very expensive, about ten million dollars more at least. Very similar size, the two buildings are very similar size, that one's the fancy building, this one actually has more jobs in it. Ironically, uh, so. And, you know, I, I, you'll see more of this, um, you know, where people are onshoring, where they're, uh, they're bringing in a lot more of the manufacturing and assembly to the United States, uh, from China. And also the, um, this, this building is, that's what we, this building was designed for and that's what it's going to be used for, you know, they anticipated this. I'm not sure in today's higher interest rates that people are going to do a lot, I don't think you're going to see many spec buildings anymore, uh, over there. I think they'll all be more build-to-suits. But I do think the market probably, you'll see more of them being done over there. But they'll probably wait to find a company like Cardinal Health before they build a building. But the combination, when this building was started, which wasn't that long ago, was that there was lower interest rates and an anticipation that onshoring would occur, and that's what happened.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I have a few questions, Tom. Uh, on the page two of the, uh, legislation, for the, yeah, the legislation. Uh, I know you mentioned about the notification to the school board, but there's also a piece in here about notification to city of Macedonia and Twinsburg. So is that the same fourteen-day?
It actually makes it longer. The school is two weeks, it's actually, that's why you have to wait till next week.
And then what about the municipalities, what's?
The municipalities were noticed and that's what expires next week.
Okay, so, so the municipalities are just going to notice and they just?
They had to notice that we copy them. Essentially, it's, the all-important part of this thing is this application. It goes to the school and to the municipalities. So ideally, they could say, go to the company, say, hey, would you stay here? I'm going to give you abatement or whatever tool they might offer them and see if they can locate a building that fits their needs. That's what it was designed to do under the state statute.
Okay, next question, uh, section two, uh, on that's the same page. Just wanted, just want to hear, get your take on this. There's a line that says, no exemption shall commit, shall commence after tax year twenty twenty-nine. Nor, this is where the question is, nor extend tax year twenty twenty-four. That's okay, I've, I answered my own question.
Okay.
I, I've read it differently.
There's some sense to them.
I read it, no, I read it differently.
If you keep reading it, it'll make some sense to you, but there is some sense to them.
Yeah, um.
That, that clause, I think, you know, the idea is that they want to emphasize that you can't receive a benefit past the fifteen-year period.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, they want to make it clear. I will tell you though, in practice, sometimes these are delayed in implementing them. We're at the final months of twenty twenty-four. I'm going to think about what year I was there for a second, but anyway, so we're at the final months of twenty twenty-four. We got to send, if you guys pass this next month, we're in, until late November, you get it down to the county and, um, they're liable to get, it won't go in, you won't see the benefit of it until twenty twenty-six very likely.
Okay.
And as a result of that, some of those clauses in there are a moving target.
So I want to make sure I'm clear on these dates, so, because it, it, it says nor extend beyond tax year twenty forty-four, uh, i.e. January first twenty forty-five. So is there a possibility that anyone that has been, had granted a CRA tax abatement for fifteen years can request an extension?
What is more likely is that five years from now, they want to do an expansion and make, and they come back and go for a second abatement. It's not likely under this agreement, it isn't likely. This has to expire. This value has to expire. There's a long-winded answer to why, but you can't abate something that's already occurred. You know?
Yeah, I'm just more, I'm just more concerned about the potential for extending.
No, this, the value that was created under this agreement cannot be extended. But if they create new value, you could do a new abatement.
Okay, all right, next question. Uh, the section four, it mentions, uh, it seems really aggressive, but if this is the way it's going to work. No, I lost it, I lost it. But it was, it was. I lost it, I'll come back to it.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
All right, so here's my last question then, because I, the other one I lost. With this new company coming in, is there a potential for exterior changes that may have to come back to?
You know, I was thinking about that on the way over, yes, there is. This company, I, to my knowledge, doesn't have a lot of, uh, they're not really having customers come to the building. It's more of an assembly plant. I don't anticipate there'll be, uh, a great deal of additional work on the exterior. I, I, I could check with that by our, until our next meeting. Is there, is there a specific reason why you ask that question?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a. Excuse me to interrupt, but it does come to the planning commission for the building occupancy permit.
Right, I mean, it's, it's a spec building, it's very spec-looking. Uh, you know, there's things like signage, maybe other colors.
I want to temper though, a little enthusiasm about it. Because of the nature of the building, I don't anticipate that they will be doing a great deal on the exterior as much as we would like it to be. I, I, uh, we'll get you more detail by the next meeting. But if they're, that building was designed to maybe have four tenants, some of them might be receiving their clients and customers at the site, but this particular company doesn't have a great deal of that.
Okay, all right, this is my last question. And this goes back to the applicant, actual application, and I mentioned the aggressive timeline. It, it says project will begin November thirty, twenty twenty-four and be completed.
I know, I know.
January twenty-five, provided an exemption is provided, so it says.
I will, I will review that issue before next week and revisit with them.
Okay.
Just so you know, there's always a dynamic between a tenant and an owner and a city. And no one wants to be the person that says you can't do it.
Yeah.
So the customer says, I want to rent your two hundred fifty thousand square feet and pay you two million dollars a year. Would you have that building ready in time? The owner always says yes. And then they, the owner goes to the city and says, will you be able to process the permits and get us an abatement in time for them to do this? We say yes. Just before we execute the agreement, we sometimes revisit these timelines. My understanding is that because the owners are actually construction companies, they are going to be able to meet those deadlines, uh, or thereabout. My, the one that I find hard that they would be able to do is that January one. I'm going to talk to them about, do you need to push that out? It'd only be a month or two. But the nature of what they're doing, I tell council, is interior improvements. The roof is on the building, they'll be able to do it through the winter. It's not like they wouldn't be able to start the project, which I have seen happen. It's that by the time they get the approvals, it's winter time, they can't, they don't want to do the foundations.
Solid inside work.
Yeah, yeah, but this is all inside work.
Okay, thank you, that answers my question.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just have a general question, I understand, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, about, uh, and I know the property taxes are, are a small sliver of this pie that we're looking at. We did a TIF on this property.
Yes.
A while ago, and my question is, what hap- how, how does this affect that TIF?
The TIF, uh, as it's working for this building, there's already been about, as I indicated, somewhere between a ten and fifteen million dollar building. I think the building application as a shell was for seventeen million dollars. So they've established about seventeen million dollars worth of improvements. It hit the TIF and the TIF will throw off the city and county portion and it'll go in a segregated account back to, um, the village. So that money is at a hundred percent. Our portion of real estate taxes plus the county portion is sent back to the city and that is the TIF proceeds. Now, the two point five million dollars for the interior build-out, seventy-five percent of that increased value will now be abated zero, so only twenty-five percent is going to be distributed amongst the school and the various taxing authorities. Part of that, uh, uh, that will still, um, hit the TIF, but we've reduced some of that revenue. Whenever you hear an abatement is being applied over there, we have an overall TIF, that we are also reducing our TIF income. So that's a fair question. But in this instance, because the shell was created, we are getting a substantial revenue out of that for this building. Thank you.
Um, I just, somebody else? I just want to make it about the notification, what we did, we did notify the school, those two communities, uh, Mr. Montello, Montello hand-delivered up to those three entities. I did, uh, have a conversation, uh, the superintendent, plus sent emails to both mayors. From here that those, uh, that, that paperwork was arriving. So we're in, like Mr. Jordan said, we're in that, we're in that window.
Yeah, a longer window because of the relocation, where there's a shorter one when there's no relocation.
Should we be excited about this project, Mr. Jordan?
Yes, yes, we should be, although I know you guys have been meeting for a while, it's at the end of your meeting, but no. It means a, a large income stream plus your TIF revenues. You know, this is, is, there's not too many ten million dollar payrolls rolling around Ohio, let alone northeast Ohio, so. You've been very fortunate and one of the largest private companies, um, has chosen that, this location. In addition to the healthcare company, which is an, is an international company. And, you know, probably one of the most expensive industrial buildings that they're being built. So, uh, there, your first two tenants are, are home runs. You know? So actually, you probably should be getting more publicity than you are for it. But everyone's just wondering where the Brown Stadium is going, that's all.
But we're working on another part.
I'm very happy it's over there.
Yeah, that's, so, Tom, I, I know we mentioned the council. We're going to have an executive session to talk about it, in case there's anything, uh, related and, uh, anything to economic development, we can have that, probably won't be much different than this out here publicly, but, um, is it the recommendation from you, and I, and I'll probably ask the same question to Brendan and thing. I know, uh, you know, that the developer and the owner of this company is very aggressive, they do want to get in there and meet those deadlines. Is it your recommendation that if council's good with, uh, the CRA and are comfortable with it after this and, and talking to, uh, to our legal counsel to pass it next Tuesday?
If, if you could, um, you know, Councilman Whedon's comments is that it's a very compressed time period. And, uh, we don't want to be the entity that's holding up the, the progress there. So, um, you know, I, if you could, uh, that would be great, yeah, but that's council's discretion.
My recommendation is going to be to, uh, uh, pass it just because, I know we, our, our council spent a lot of time with the, with the agreement. Certainly helped being our second one. I mean, at that project, at that site. And I just know the aggressiveness and the meatness and, uh, I'd like to get that payroll in there. Get that payroll, I, I know one person, uh, two people here tonight that would like to get that payroll even more than me. Would make your jobs a little easier too, so, but, um, okay. Anybody have any questions for our economic development consultant, Mr. Jordan, on any of the items on?
Uh, Mr. Mayor? I have one more question, a quick one, on the, uh, the buyback of the property up there. Is that when the, for the title transfer and all that stuff, the property transfer, is that something that Mr. Montello's office can do? Or do we have to hire outside?
He's handling it conjunction, he's, components, he's handling the components was, the thing, the original agreement was through Brick or Grayden. So it was only logical that they participated in some of that. Mr. Montello is handling some of the, uh, escrow and the other closing issues. Is that an accurate description, Sean?
Yes, sir, just, uh, you know, it's kind of a complicated, unusual situation, so I have to kind of rely on outside council to be certain that we're doing it correctly.
And this, you know?
It doesn't happen very often.
No, it doesn't.
Any other questions for Mr. Jordan? Any, any from, any residents? Okay, nothing, anything from the live stream?
Is it still working?
Yeah. How many, how many people we have watching?
Current, ten, thirty-three views.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jordan, and?
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, so, is council comfortable with me putting these items on the council meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, put those on. Okay. Okay, Chief, did you want to come up front by the table and? Well, hang on, okay, go ahead, John, go ahead, the restroom is up, grab you when you come back, because I'll tell you about. So, when John comes back, he, and I did share with the chief, if council's in agreement for making that part-time personnel full-time, that we would have to do a motion in a council meeting. So we can do it next week, if everybody was comfortable with that. Then, the chief will make sure we got everything right with the posting with Mr. Delano to, that's consistent with the CBA agreement, you know, and that stuff, so that, if council's good with it, that would take place next, council, next Tuesday, a week from today. Okay, so we'll get a motion made up there. So I guess I don't need John for that, so. Unless you guys have questions. So where, what else do we want to do? We wanted to go to, through the chief's budget then, with him, we were still continuing, or what was?
What was the last?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
While we had the safety committee meeting, some things were brought up about, not necessarily the police department, but more so dispatch and some changes that chief wanted to make. Is that better discussed in an executive session?
We can discuss, I should wait for John to make that, remember, we can discuss personnel in executive session, and we are going to have an executive session next week. I'll let John, but I, so yeah, so that's. John, we had a, well, first of all, I did share, and if you want to expound on it, that we talked after last meeting, to how we would, what we would have to do to change that position from, that we, I could talk to you, what we would have to do if we had to do an appropriation or something like that. Said you could always, you would do it next year or something, is that what you said, or at the end of the year?
Right.
Okay. That we would, to change that job from part-time to full-time, a motion would be accepted in the council meeting.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then, Councilwoman Allen had another question for, for you.
The safety committee had discussed and, with chief, about some changes that he wanted to make concerning the dispatchers and that department, is that something that should fall under executive session?
Personnel.
Yeah, why not, I would probably feel more comfortable doing that, yes.
Okay, and would chief be included in on that too then, or?
If you so, you can invite whoever you want in executive session, if that's what you so choose.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Just so I'm clear, you guys want to hire a, what, you're gonna, one part-time position to a, to a full-time? That's, that's what I'm gonna make a motion about, correct? All right, I wasn't here, and I didn't watch it on YouTube, I'm sorry.
That's right, you had your eye issue, that's right.
You wouldn't have been able to see it anyway, there was, there was nothing there.
That's why I keep putting these drops in, but anyway.
Wouldn't it be like seeing two of Cholographs, that would really be a bad thing, would it? Don't say nothing, Mr. Nielsen.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
For, for this dispatch subject, is, are, are we gonna be talking about a specific dispatcher or dispatchers? Or is it a generalized? Because if it is generalized, we could talk about it out here, it's not a specific person. I mean, I'm just bringing that up as a matter of the sunshine law stuff and all that.
I'm not sure what the topic is, so I, but.
Yeah, right. I'm not either, I don't know.
I can generally see what it is, I suppose, you know, but.
It's up to you, or you can discuss it and decide before the meeting, if you're more, you know, whatever, whatever you're comfortable with. That's up to.
You know, just give me a call and talk about it, or whatever.
Okay, I'll, I'll call you, John.
All right.
And then talk to the, you know, council president and, and your committee, and everybody's in agreement to have that, and put it out, you know, you can. Technically, it takes three to put something on the agenda, except for the mayor.
Right.
Or a core, easy to say, but I'm good with council on, you know. We're, we're a good team, and I want to keep it that way. So, any, so go ahead, how did council, do we want to continue to go through the chief's budget?
Sure, yeah.
I don't know where we exactly left off. Are you guys?
Mr. Mayor, I would just ask the chief if anything changed in regards to what we spoke about last week, if there had been any changes in your regard.
No changes as far as I'm aware of.
And Mr.?
Yes, go ahead.
For Nicole, this current budget draft has in it for the police, that added full-time officer, that we are going to make a motion on next week, plus one additional full-time officer, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, this is just me talking out loud, so we know what everybody's kind of presented to us so far has been their operating budgets.
Correct.
Correct? So, we are, even if, you know, council maybe isn't, you know, we, I'm not gonna say council, I'm gonna say us, us as a body, and the departments aren't sure about what we're gonna do with capital, we'll still, we're still gonna discuss it at a later meeting. With the, you know, and, and go through that and make those decisions. Okay. I'm just saying that so we're not gonna, we're not, we don't want to do capital right now with the, with the chief. We'll do that after we get the operating part, is that kind of how everybody's doing it?
And vehicles are considered capital, correct?
Unless you want to talk about it tonight, I mean, it's up.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the operating budget for the police, it is what it is, I mean, that, you know, the, the only thing as far as I'm concerned is discussing whether we've already gonna put that full, part-time to full-time on, next week. The only thing in my mind is whether or not we would agree to adding one additional officer, because that's gonna add over, with pay and benefits, over a hundred thousand dollars to the budget. So, to me, that's the big question, if, if we are going to keep that in the budget or remove that, or at least remove it for some time.
It's already in the budget.
Well, it's in the proposed budget.
Right.
Right.
So, are we going to keep that, or are we going to remove it? That would be the only question, because the other stuff, it, it is, you know, it's a contract and, and there's supplies and everything, so what, what are you gonna do there?
Share bullets.
Yeah, you get one bullet apiece, put it in your.
Mayor, I have a question, kind of in regards to that, I don't know if or what can be said, but with these new companies going in, has there been any discussion between them with security and our department?
What we, great day, we haven't had any discussion, they haven't had anything. What we know with Cardinal Health is, and they'll probably, the gentleman walked around with Rob, but there will come a time when they're, and then they'll probably, we'll organize a meeting with their head of security, they have their own very elaborate camera system, security system, they wanted that fence around there. They're very kind of, you know, they handle that part, but I think it's important, and they feel that same way. They want that relationship with the department, and so, their head of security calls the chief, you know, they, they all follow the chain of command, so that's gonna, that's gonna happen. But as far as, you know, their concern when they were looking at places was the safety of the area. But they're very, they handle things their way, he came here, walked the site, walked around the building and everything, they're very, you know, they have their own security department there, because of the, the value of the inventory that's there. But as far as having it, and great day hasn't expressed any of that. But they know the area very well. But when that time comes, we definitely want them to have that connection, no different than any other business that's in the area. But as far as, yeah, they're very, that's why they got that fence around there, it's gonna be very secure, there's a lot of cameras, from what they've told us, and they have a monitoring center and everything else, just for their property. You know, no, I shouldn't say it's not their property, but for their site. Any other?
The only thing that I would say as head of the safety committee meeting is I would keep the money in there for the other full-time and the potential part-time also, for now. We know we're just gonna be increasing traffic, we know we're going to be increased with businesses, you know, coming this year and stuff. And I'd rather have it sitting there and say, chief, we need you to hold off on this one and this one yet, than all of a sudden need it and not have it in the budget.
That's the five-year decision you'll have to make. I don't know if you want to discuss it now.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll just make a, a brief comment on that, and, and that is, you know, the draft budget is, is just that, it's a draft. And we understand, you know, that request. But by the same token, you know, we know that there's discussion regarding other personnel next week, you know, i.e. dispatch. You don't know what that all, what that's all about, plus you have, you know, the discussion regarding capital. So until everything is on the table, you know, everything still has to be discussed, so it's all on the table. That's the work of council, the mayor, finance team, is to put it all out there and see what can stick and what, what's best for this village, you know, for the twenty twenty-five budget.
I agree.
So you have that number in front of you, so that's good. So you have that number in, in the, in the budget, right? And that's a complete number, you figured that out with OPRS and everything too, correct, Nikki? So it's a real number, so you, you're able to, okay, good. Maybe we just won't ask you anything.
I think we need to ask him what else, wasn't there something else?
You wait two hours, Dave, whatever, say, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
If I can ask you a question?
Yes.
In reference to an email that I sent you last week about the Gatsco contract? Do you want to talk about that, or do you want to wait on that as well?
No, I don't think we'll talk, we gotta, we gotta review that a little bit. And that is also something, well, we could talk a little bit about, you want to just say, Dave, we got, I know we got a couple of months, the Gatsco contract's coming up, which is the camera contract. And they approached Dave, chief, and he notified me and sent me the email and stuff. I, I think, I mentioned to him, you know, we'd like to talk to him and see if we can maybe reduce it or do something, because what we do know is we're talking to talk about increasing those fees, you do have the spreadsheets that Suzanne put together and forwarded everybody. But we also need to talk, because that contract is something that council would have to pass, correct?
I would say so.
Yes.
We should renegotiate the terms.
Yeah.
Definitely, and or increase the rate.
When does it expire again, Dave?
I believe it's January fifth.
January fifth, okay. Not that they wouldn't. I, from what I know about the camera companies, I'm sorry, Ray, but and, and chief, you tell me if any different, I don't think there would be no reason, unless we weren't happy to leave Gatsco, correct? With the.
As far as I know, there's not much competition, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I, I'm not even aware of another company, actually.
I'm aware of another company.
Perhaps one other one, which I'm not.
Yeah, I know.
Real comfortable with, but anyway. Don't know a lot about it, I should say, not comfortable, but not very familiar with it.
What do you think, I mean, we can, I can put it in, I don't think it's one of those things to go in the safety, I think it, I mean, into the safety and insurance committee, I think it's one of those things to kind of administratively work out and then bring to council. Would you agree with that, or do you want to, you know?
I just have one question, Mayor, or two.
Yes.
So, January fifth of twenty twenty-five is, and then the other question is, whose camera?
Well, I have to look at it, what's that?
Whose equipment is?
I gotta make sure there wasn't an automatic extension in there.
Okay.
John's gotta review the contract.
Whose equipment are on the pole, whose equipment is out there?
That's theirs, we missed everything. Correct, chief?
Correct.
Yeah. Chief, and I'll ask you this, and you can ask me this, I, I think we can, I think we should continue with the cameras. I think they, they provide safety for our residents. Would you agree with that, chief, too?
I would.
That you'd like to keep them?
Okay.
That's the biggest hurdle right there, you know, if, if we didn't want to keep them, but I think it's to our advantage to keep them, we just talked about it today, who was out there? Somebody just said to me, they walked, was it you, Councilman Nielsen, walked over by the water main break over there and said, you know, car flew by, and like, and you got all this construction going on, you know, so we all know the safety over there. Anything else?
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just curious.
Councilwoman Allen.
Thank you, Nikki and Melissa, did you guys just pull all of this from all these other communities together, or did chief have any input on any of this also?
She actually prepared that whole document.
Yes.
Well, thank you.
No, Suzanne.
Suzanne did.
Oh, Suzanne did.
Suzanne, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Suzanne wasn't in today, she was. Suzanne wasn't in today, she, uh, wasn't feeling well, so she wasn't in today. Otherwise, I was going to, she might have been at the meeting. So, she has no problem coming to the meeting and talking about it. Today wasn't the day. Yeah, she put that together. I know we talked about the court too, and I did share that conversation, um, with Mr. Montello and Suzanne a little bit and, um, you know, talked about that you're still going to have to pay a prosecutor and that even if you go to Garfield and about the fees, but we, we can get more on that.
The only, Mr. Mayor, the only cost you would save is the magistrates, I believe.
Yeah.
I mean, and maybe security here, although I don't think we have a lot of security here, but, uh.
Does the, the officer would have to go to the court too, correct, if they're involved in, uh?
I don't believe that because of that they would, but I think there's a, we rotate with other departments, don't we? We have Senate officer every month, and there's a certain schedule, I think.
Yeah, they quit doing that several years ago.
So, they just have the bailiffs there now.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay.
The reason being, the clerk would still have to process the tickets and get them over to Garfield, and so you still would need the clerk and, and, and there would be waivers probably that we would still accept. You know, you, you start a waiver bureau when you usually, uh, close down a court and then the Marty, the prosecutor would still have the same duties because he'd be dealing with the same amount of cases. So, right now, if you, if you're looking at the number, the bottom line number, you look at, well, his salary is going to have to be paid anyway because he's going to, you know, so, so in reality, the court's not only showing a profit, but also paying his salary. And the magistrates, uh, you know, their pay is about average, 350 a session, I believe is what they got. And, uh, so I don't know, we might save, but then we lose the court costs too. We, right now, we get to retain the court cost money. If we send it to Garfield, they would keep the entire court cost money. The fine money, we probably would still be paid back from Garfield, you know, assuming people pay it. So, let me, we could do an analogy, let me think about it, but, uh.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I did go through a quick analysis and I can forward this on to council with her and, um.
Well, good, you completed it.
With the revenue, um, the expenses with legal, the magistrate, the clerk, there, other than that, there's very few expenses involved in, um, in that, the mayor's court. Uh, we came up with so far year-to-date, a surplus of seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, I can forward this on to council.
That would be, that's perfect, Nikki.
And that was, Mayor, that was one of my questions, uh, and Mr. Montello touched on that. If we did get rid of that, would we still need somebody here to process things for Garfield? And apparently, that answer is yes, we'd still need somebody to, so we would still be paying somebody to do that.
Right, it's not like an all-inclusive thing where we just give everything to Garfield and we do nothing.
Right.
I don't believe the police department would handle that aspect, you'd still want the clerk to do that, right? I mean.
Correct, the clerk handles all of that for us.
Exactly, so.
Yeah.
Which is, it's common, that's, that's the way it is.
Well, what's, anything else we want to go through with, with the chief while he's here? Chief, do you have anything you want to go through because if, or anything you want to reiterate? I mean, because that's good, that creates more conversation too. You heard the conversation about the, uh, whether or not keeping those other employee in there and the part-time. We're going to talk about capital and I guess at a different date because I know that's something we talked about or you talked about inside the safety and insurance committee. Any, anything else? We, we also have, uh, talked about dispatch last time and did mention that, that you want to keep that separate from this operating budget, correct? That's what, um, I got out of that. I, I know you mentioned, like, you have somebody, if we did do that project, we'd probably have to get at least three bids on that just because of the pure size of that project and different things, but, uh, anything else? I mean, I'm just kind of, would, anything, any other part of the budget you wanted to go through?
No, that's it.
You don't have anywhere to cut seven hundred thousand dollars?
I wish I did.
I know that, I know that. And, and all our departments do a good job of, uh, and over, they certainly have over the years to manage their budgets.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
What I would like to say is, uh, I'd like to thank all of you for agreeing that, uh, you will afford me that additional officer. Thank you very much.
Well, we appreciate that, chief, council. But they haven't voted on it yet.
I know. We all live here, Dave.
Nikki, anything, uh, that you wanted to share with the, I almost do feel bad you waited this long, Dave and, uh, chief, um, anything else to, anything to update us on while you're here?
The water main's been fixed.
Mayor?
Did you get the escapee?
There was no escapee last night.
Well, I appreciate that too.
Yeah. The, the incident that the mayor is referencing is, I believe it was last week, there was something on the, um, on a Facebook page saying that there was an escapee and that there were SWAT teams out there and, uh, US Marshals were out there looking for this person as well, and that's not the case. What ended up happening is there was a domestic violence incident that happened in Northfield and the aggressor took off before the officers could get there. So, what they did is they set up a perimeter and one of the areas that they were checking or, or holding onto was Sagamore and Walton Road. They did have the Macedonia drone unit up looking for this person. I don't know if they found him or not, but they know who he is, and that's pretty much what the incident was.
Mayor?
Yes.
Chief, and I don't know if you can say anything or not, but I was just curious. The other day, Alexander northbound was blocked off, there was a whole bunch of emergency lights about halfway down on Northfield.
Uh, yes, so that was.
Northfield, northbound was.
Yeah, that, that was just a couple of days ago, um, and I responded to that one as well. God, I was here a little later. A vehicle that was traveling northbound, uh, went left of center and hit a vehicle that was going southbound. So, um, there were three people that were involved in the accident. One vehicle had two people in it, uh, the passenger of that vehicle ended up going to the hospital. The person that, um, was hit, um, they didn't go to the hospital, but they were checked out by the fire department. And we did have to shut down Alexander Road between, or I'm sorry, Northfield Road between Alexander and Hannah Parkway for a short period of time. And once the wreckers got there and you were able to get the vehicles, we opened it back up.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else for, uh, the chief? Anything, so Nikki, we'll kind of, we are, we are, we're going to put everything on here legislation-wise on the, on the council meeting, we're going to have a, uh, executive session. We're going to have the motion for the, uh, police personnel. And for moving forward, so, uh, we're going to have any finance discussion prob, probably not next week, correct? Because we got the executive session or do we want still? I mean, I could put it on there and we can just say we'll continue it, you know, that, but we could always do it under other business too, just kind of getting an idea. Or we'll continue the, uh, finance discussion in the following COW meeting. Correct, I'll put, I could, I can put it on there. It, it never hurts to have it on there in case we want to touch, something comes up. I'll put it, we'll put it on there, so we will put it on there. Go ahead, Nikki, you want to say something?
Um, I was hoping to maybe just get a little bit of time because we should have the financials done at that point. We can see where we're at kind of year-to-date, just to kind of go through those. If we don't hit the budget.
For December's meeting, is that what you're talking about?
For next week, for, then we'll have everything through October.
Oh, okay.
Oh, just to kind of look at that, I'll get that ahead if you have any questions for the year-to-date.
And then, um, if we can have another, we don't have to necessarily talk budget next week, but if we want to do it the following meeting, that'd be good.
We could always just put finance discussion. There you go. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we make the motion next week for the chief, John, will he be able to hit the send button and get that notice out?
We're gonna.
Well, I thought we were promoting a part-time or the full-time.
No, no, no.
No, it's not promoting, no.
We're converting the job from part-time to full-time. Right now, right now, and I know you missed it a little bit because you weren't here, but I thought, so we have a part-time opening. We want to take that part-time opening and make it full-time. So, there will be an appropriation. So, that's, and that's what Mr. Delano was looking at. But I think what we're going to do is me, the chief, and if you want to be part of it, we're going to call Mr. Delano, we'll get that, get that straight. We'll get that straight before, you know, Tuesday or we'll have it straight on Monday. So, you can, once it's passed, yeah. I don't, I don't see, I don't see a big problem with that, do you? He's already worked on it, he looked at it compared to CBA, so, um, we just want to clarify that, if I'm, so, yeah. To answer that, yeah, that shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue there. I don't, the, the, because I, yeah, that was for something else, I was thinking it has to go, okay. All right. So, we will have that. So, moving forward, does, we know we're going to have some, uh, some type of spreadsheet. Nikki and Melissa are going to work with Natalie on that. Everything else from the departments is really just going to be next for their capital?
Right.
Okay, and that doesn't mean we can't bring anybody back and I can bring Suzanne in too if, if we need to discuss that. But I think she'll probably be able to, and she's already told us, you know, what the increase would be, you know, and that looks very reasonable on the camera, the camera tickets. When's the last time we increased the, John and, and the chief, do you know the, the tickets? The, uh, fees on the regular court fees?
I don't think we ever have, I could be wrong.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
They have not been increased, we looked back, I think, was it 2018?
I don't think we've.
No, they were never, the, they, the traffic cameras were added in 2018.
But never increased.
But.
But not our regular court?
Yeah, I don't think our regular, we've never passed since I've been on anything for mayor's court increases.
Okay, so, that's probably something you and Suzanne can look into.
Sure, sure.
Where are we at compared to the surrounding courts? So, that might be, if we're going to definitely look at increasing the cameras, maybe we should look increasing the overall court fees too.
I believe that's what Suzanne gave us, didn't she?
She gave, yes.
Surrounding communities and how we radiate there with our fees.
Right.
But I, I, I want to see what exactly the increase should be.
Do those fees, uh, Mayor and, and John, do they have to be approved by council? Yes?
Yes, sir.
You'd have to amend the ordinance to increase them.
Okay.
Okay, chief, anything for us?
Nope.
Okay. Anything from any resident or one resident that's here? Or anybody watching the YouTube, non-resident, resident? Anything from council?
Nope.
Okay, well, you know what's next.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting for another, oh, I'm sorry, to adjourn the meeting. Ten oh five.
Second.
Remember, we had to do that?
Yeah.
Several times.
Who, uh, don't even tell me, this was a, a good one here, right? We were here a while.
Second.
Second invite, Jennifer, Councilwoman Allen, vote on the motion.
Councilman Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Canzoni?
Yes.
Councilwoman Allen? Councilman Spitznagle? Councilman Whedon?
Yes. Okay, uh, motion approved at ten oh six PM. Thank you, everybody. Have a good rest of the week.
Audio's coming on.